Good afternoon and welcome. I'm Dan Garadnik, Chair of the City Planning Commission and Director of the Department of City Planning. Welcome to today's review session of the City Planning Commission. Today's date is April 1, 2024. We are joined today by Vice Chair Knuckles, Commissioners Benjamin Cerullo, Dweck, Gold, Kurmani, and Marine on Zoom, and Osorio and Rampershead here in the room. Before we get to today's agenda, I want to note that it's been a big couple of weeks for City of Yes for Housing Opportunity. On March 22nd, I was happy to join Mayor Adams at Antioch Baptist Church in Jamaica, Queens, to discuss how City of Yes for Housing Opportunity will make it easier for faith-based organizations to create much-needed new housing on their properties or convert older unused buildings into housing. These faith-based organizations are often on the front lines of our housing crisis, feeling its impact on their congregations and providing critical services to New Yorkers in need. City of Yes for Housing will provide them with the support that they need to build new homes and continue serving their communities, because we can only solve this housing crisis if everybody has a chance to pitch in. Deputy Mayor Maria Torres Springer also made a significant announcement at the Association for Better New York last week. During her remarks, she revealed that City of Yes for Housing Opportunity will include proposals for new, high-density residential zoning districts that allow for more housing than is currently permitted under the state's restrictive 12 FAR cap. These new zoning districts would allow up to 15 and 18 FAR and require mandatory inclusionary housing, ensuring that 20 to 30% of homes would be permanently affordable for New Yorkers, earning an average of 40 to 80% of the area median income. These districts will allow us to create affordable housing in places where it is currently almost impossible to do so, high-cost, central areas with great access to transit, jobs, and amenities like Midtown Manhattan. By creating these zoning districts now, New York City will be in a position to act once the FAR cap is ultimately lifted. I once again call on our partners in Albany to remove this outdated restriction and put New York City fully back in control of its own zoning. Also, some great news up in the Bronx. Community Board Nine voted unanimously, and Community Board Eleven voted with conditions to support the Bronx Metro North Plan. This plan would revamp land use around new Metro North stations in the East Bronx, allowing for thousands of new transit-oriented homes, jobs, and public open space. We look forward to continuing to hear from the community boards, Borough President Vanessa Gibson, and members of the public as this important proposal makes its way through public review. Let's move to today's agenda. We will begin with a proposed rezoning along 21st Street in Astoria, Queens, to enable two new mixed-use developments with ground-floor retail. The first building would include over 50 homes, 16 of them permanently income-restricted, and the second would include nearly 40 homes, a dozen of them permanently income-restricted. Both sites are one block from Astoria Park and about a half mile from the Astoria Boulevard N and W train station. In East New York, Brooklyn, we will look at a proposed mapping of three new streets to facilitate the Alafia mixed-use development. Located at the former Brooklyn Developmental Center site at 875 Erskine Street, this large project would create around 2,500 income-restricted homes and include commercial community facility and light manufacturing space. Tenants would live within walking distance of Shirley Chisholm State Park, the Gateway Center Mall, and multiple bus lines. Also in Brooklyn, an application to legalize a two-story mixed-use, mixed residential and community facility building containing a medical office at 250 86th Street, Bay Ridge. The project would map MIH to guarantee permanently affordable homes in the case of future development here or in the rezoning area. From there, we'll hear about a proposed rezoning at 701 West 135th Street in West Harlem to create 60 homes, around 15 of them permanently income-restricted. The building's top floors would cantilever over the Amtrak rails that run next to the Henry Hudson Parkway. The site is located near Riverbank State Park, the Riverside Valley Community Garden, and the One Train at 137th Street City College. Not in my prepared remarks, but I will also note that it's rather close to Riverside Park as well. Our last new item for today is a request to facilitate a new seven-space automated parking facility in an existing 10-unit residential development at 601 Washington Street in Tribeca in Manhattan. With that, Sarah, the floor is yours. Thanks, everybody, for being here today.
Good afternoon and welcome to the City Planning Commission Review Session for Monday, April 1, 2024. The time is 1:12 PM, and a quorum is present. The first item on our agenda is a certification of a zoning map and zoning text amendments in Queens Community District One. Our presenter is Scott Solomon.
Chair for the record, I'm recused from this matter.
Commissioner Rampershead is recused on this item. Thank you, Commissioner.
Great. Thank you, Sarah, and good afternoon, Commissioners. Wait while that slide pops up. And back house, when it does pull up, you can go right to Slide 2. Great, I'm seeing it now, and we can go to Slide 2. So this is a private application-
Give us one second. Scott, give us one second. We're catching up to you here in the hearing room. So, okay, I think we are now ready. Okay, we're gonna go to Slide 2?
Yep, great, and I see that as well here. Thank you. So this is a private application by Astoria Park Warehouse LLC in the Astoria neighborhood of Queens Community District One. On the property located at 2101 and 2116 24th Avenue, the applicant proposes a zoning map amendment to change an R5B and R5D C13 district to a R6A C14 zoning district to facilitate development of two new mixed-use buildings and a zoning text amendment to establish MIH. Next slide, please. I'm gonna presume this slides up, and I'm just gonna presume throughout that I'm about three seconds behind. So the project area is shaded here in blue. It's located in Astoria, one block east of Astoria Park and three blocks north of the Tri-Borough Bridge leading to the PQE and Grand Central Parkway. It's directly across the street. The project area is the Eagle Electric Building. This is a seven, excuse me, five-story former industrial building converted to residential and commercial uses on the ground floor. Further north is another previously converted manufacturing to residential building, a seven-story building. The project area has good access to transit located along 21st Street, a major corridor in Western Queens, and is also serviced by the Q100 and Q69 bus routes. The project area is also approximately a half mile from the Astoria Ditmars and Astoria Boulevard train stations that are served by the N and W lines. Next slide, please. So 1961, the project area was mapped with an R5 district with a C12 overlay on the southern half of the northern block. It was then rezoned 2010 to an R5D C13, where the commercial overlay continues to exist, and the remaining portion was rezoned to R5B as part of the 2010 Astoria rezoning, which affected approximately 238 blocks. The surrounding area consists of a mix of residential and commercial uses. Again, that Eagle Electric Building, that was rezoned from R5 to R7A in 2002, and that facilitated the conversion of that industrial, former industrial building to condominiums with commercial uses on the ground floor. As mentioned earlier, Astoria Park is located one block away, giving ample access to open space. Next slide, please. So on this slide, we have a closer view of the project area in context of its immediate surroundings. The development sites are outlined in blue and is comprised of the Farmer Ricardos by the Bridge banquet hall. This is Site 1, and its associated parking lot is on 24th Avenue, Site 2. For land-use rational purposes, the project area was expanded to connect the two sites and also includes eight other lots in the rezoning area. The lot north of Site 1 is a recently developed as-of-right building completed in 2018 under the R5B zoning. Lots west of Site 2 are multifamily built in 2000, excuse me, built in 1970. Many of the buildings and surrounding contexts are similar to these multifamily homes. However, the tallest buildings in the immediate area, again, is that five-story, 79-foot-tall Eagle Electric Building across the street, and further north, again, is another converted, that other converted manufacturing residential building. Next slide. And the following slides are of the existing conditions at the ground level. So here, on Slide 6, we have a view of Site 1, the Farmer Ricardos by the Bridge banquet hall, facing east from 21st Street and 24th Avenue. Next slide, please. On Slide 7, we have a view of Site 2, the Ricardos by the Bridge parking lot facing southwest from 24th Avenue. Next slide, onto Slide 8, please. We have a view of the two-story multifamily homes within the proposed boundary, rezoning boundary, facing south at the intersection of 21st Street and 24th Avenue. Next slide, onto Slide 9. Here we have a view of the new build site within the proposed rezoning boundary facing south at the intersection of 21st Street and 23rd Terrace. Next slide, please, onto Slide 10. And then the last photo existing conditions is facing towards that former Eagle Electric Building across from the proposed rezoning area facing the intersection of 21st Street and 24th Avenue. Next slide, please. Now on Slide 11, in terms of the proposed development, here's Site 1. This is a proposed eight-story mixed-use building with approximately 7,000 square feet of commercial space and 54 dwelling units, 16 to be made affordable under MIH. Site 1 would also include 23 uncovered parking spaces. Next slide, please. On Slide 12, it's development Site 2. This is a proposed seven-story mixed-use building with approximately 8,000 square feet of commercial space and 38 dwelling units. 12 would be made affordable under MIH. Site 2 would also include 18 accessory parking spaces. Next slide, please. So on Slide 13, to facilitate this development, the applicant proposes a zoning map amendment to change from an R5B as in Bravo and R5D as in Delta with a C13 commercial overlay district to an R6A C14 district, as indicated by the dotted black lines on the image to the right. According to the applicant, this rezoning is appropriate because of the intersection of the wide streets that front the project area as well as proximity to transit and open space. The boundary for the project area was, again, expanded to promote continuity along 21st, along 21st, a major corridor in this neighborhood. Next slide, please. So above, we have a comparison of the existing and proposed zoning districts. R6A districts generally produce buildings at a seven-to-eight-story scale. For both development sites, the transition from the existing R5B and R5D allows an increase in residential floor area from 1.35 and 2 respectively to 3.6 when located in an MIH area, and an increase from a 33 to 45-foot maximum building height respectively to 85 feet. Parking requirements under the proposed C14 overlay are also less than required under the existing C14. Community facility FAR is also increased from 2 and 1.35 respectively for Sites 1 and 2 to a FAR of 3 for both sites under proposed actions. Next slide, please. And as mentioned earlier, the applicant is proposing a zoning text amendment, and this is to map MIH options 1 and 2 across the project area. Next slide, please. We're on Slide 16. This application requires a racial equity report, RER, because it would increase the residential floor area by at least 50,000 square feet. The area median income for CD1 is approximately $79,000, which is higher than the AMIs for the Borough of Queens and the city overall. The applicant proposes to provide 28 total income-restricted units at 80% AMI with estimated monthly rents ranging from $1,700 for studios to $2,500 for two-bedroom units at estimated average incomes ranging from $79,000 for a one-person household to $113,000 for a four-person household. Next slide, please. Of the approximately 190,000 residents within CD1, 15% identify as Asian, 7% identify as Black, 25% identify as Hispanic, and 45, excuse me, 47% identify as white. Next slide, please. Between 2010 and 2020, the area saw a 7% increase in total population. This was coupled with an increase in all population groups aside from the Hispanic-Latino group, which did not significantly change. Next slide. And final slide. This, in conclusion, applicant proposes both actions, zoning map amendment and zoning text amendment to produce both these seven- and eight-story mixed-use buildings, total 92 units, 28 to be permanently income-restricted. And that completes my presentation. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. If there are questions for you. Okay, Scott, thank you very much. This item certified. We're gonna move on to the next. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
The second item on our agenda is a certification of a city map amendment in Brooklyn Community District 5. Presenting for the first time to the commission is Abraham Abreu.
All right, Abraham, welcome.
Hello. Nice to be formally meeting all the members of the commission. Well, not all, but the members who are here for the first time while we wait for this to boot up.
Glad you're here, all right.
Thank you. So hi, my name's Abraham Abreu. I am the city map team leader in the Technical Review Division here at City Planning, and I am here to talk about the Alafia Street Mapping Project, which is a city map amendment in CD5 of Brooklyn. So this is a private application from a private applicant, Vital BDC LLC. It is an amendment to the city map involving three new streets, Alafia, and East New York. So they are looking to map Abule Avenue, Vital Avenue, and Field Drive. These new streets would provide access to and through Alafia, which was a mixed-use development that will provide between 2,400 and 2,623 new affordable housing units as well as commercial community facility and light manufacturing space. This was approved as part of an Empire State Development GPP in September 2021. So here is our Borough of Brooklyn with the project area starred in purple. So it is in the southern part of East New York, adjacent to the Gateway Center Mall and the Belt Parkway. Here we are zoomed in a little bit more. Just to give a bit more local context, you can see the development outlined in purple and then outlined in orange and kind of shown in white are the three proposed new streets. Here is an aerial view. I don't know how well you can see the yellow on the projector, but that is the Alafia development. Just to the north is the Fountains. This is a multi-story residential development that is, was Phase 1 of the Vital Brooklyn BDC project. Alafia is Phase 2. Just to the west across Erskine Street is the Gateway Center Mall. We also have some parks in the area. Just south, we have Shirley Chisholm State Park. And to the east across the creek is Spring Creek Inlet Park. The, also, in terms of transit access to the area, the closest subway is New Lots on the 3, the terminal of the 3. That's about a mile northwest of here, and we have the B-13 and the B-84 buses that circulate within a block of the area. So we'll take a look at some site photos just to orient. As you can see in the inset map, we're kind of the northeast corner looking in, and we're gonna kind of do a clockwise loop around, orbiting around the project site. So this is on Fountain Avenue looking kind of southwest into the project site. And I won't know, you see this wall that is pretty prominent in this picture and is pretty prominent in several of the pictures that will be coming up that is going to be taken down as part of the development. So this is a bit farther south on Fountain, looking into a driveway. Continuing our orbit, we're now in the southeast corner looking in. This is where the proposed Vital Avenue would connect with the existing street network to the east on Fountain. Now we're on the south border on Seaview, looking north into the property. This is where the proposed Field Drive would come out and connect. Now we are on the southwest corner on Erskine Street, looking into the development site. And lastly, this is now, we're at the northwest corner. So you can see the Fountains on the left, on the north. The Alafia would be on the right. This wide pedestrian path here would be remaining. It would be kind of just to the north of the proposed Abule Avenue. So Abule Avenue would be kind of like at the very right or south end of this picture. All right, so we've done some kind of geographic orientation. So I want to give a little bit of a background about what this project, the history of this project, what this project is that these proposed map streets are going to be facilitating. So Alafia sits on the former Brooklyn, excuse me, Brooklyn Developmental Center campus of the New York State Office for People with Developmental Disabilities, or the BDC. The BDC was closed in 2015 as part of an effort to decentralize developmental disability services. And then it was later determined to be surplus property. So the BDC mixed-use project, as it was called at the time, was shown to the CPC in July 2021 as part of the process to get the state GPP approved. That happened in September of 2021. EST approved the GPP and adopted the secret statement of findings to have this two-phase Vital Brooklyn project happen. Now, note, the GPP overrides the zoning resolution to facilitate this development, but the development plan is roughly equivalent to an R7A C24. And so in December 2021, the development site was conveyed from the former owners, the dormitory authority of the state of New York, to a private owner developer, VBKC1 Owner LLC at the time, which, and they have begun construction on the housing and some of the related infrastructure on the site. So this is the proposed site plan that these streets would be facilitating. So there will be approximately 2,600 affordable housing units, which are in blue. These would be restricted to 30 to 80% AMI, and they kind of line this sort of interior part on both sides. There's also almost 144,000 square feet of commercial uses, which is yellow, mostly concentrated in the west along Erskine Street. A bit over 55,000 square feet of community facilities in that, like, salmon color, which would include a community center and a health clinic. Also, almost 30,000 square feet of light manufacturing, which would include a vertical farm and Meals on Wheels Kitchen. And then the last thing I want to draw your attention to here is on the south and right where the Seaview Avenue label is, is a one acre, excuse me, urban farm. And overall, there are about four acres of public open space as part of this development. So getting into the actual action that is being requested here, it's a mapping of three new public streets, which I have highlighted in purple here. So we're just gonna go through real quick and talk a little bit about the characteristics of what these streets would be. So starting at the north, we have Abule Avenue, which would be mapped to a width of 50 feet. When we talk about mapped width of streets, that doesn't mean it's 50-foot-wide of roadway. That's 50 feet of public right-of-way from street line to street lines, including the roadway and public sidewalks, et cetera. So it'd be 50-foot mapped width, approximately 749 feet long between Erskine Street in the west and Fountain Avenue in the east, and this would be a two-way street. The second street is Vital Avenue down here. This would, depending on which part of the street you're on, would be either 50 or 60-foot-wide mapped width, street line to street line, with a length of approximately 1,132 feet between, again, Erskine and Fountain Avenue, farther south. And then finally, we have Field Drive, which will have a mapped width of 57 feet, and it would run approximately 238 feet from the newly mapped Vital Avenue in the north to the existing Seaview Avenue in the south, also a two-way street. That intersection with Seaview Ave is about 603 feet east of the Seaview-Erskine intersection. So yeah, basically, to summarize the action that is seeking certification to ULP today, it's a change to the city map that would map three new public streets, Abule Avenue, Vital Avenue, and Field Drive, to facilitate access to and circulation throughout this Alafia development, which is a major mixed-use development approved as part of a GPP in 2021, comprising Phase 2 of the Vital Brooklyn Initiative for BDC. So that was the presentation. I'm happy to take any questions anybody has now.
All right, bravo, Abraham. Congrats. Nicely done. Okay, I'm gonna start with the Vice Chairman, and I'll come back for questions myself. Go ahead, Vice Chairman.
Thank you. This doesn't go to the action before us, but I'm just wondering, what is the, if you know, the projected completion time of this project? It's gonna take several years, I assume.
I would assume several years. I am not sure. I don't know if Brooklyn... So I do not know, unfortunately, but I could definitely reach out and find out. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. Okay, just a couple of questions for me. The current dynamics, this obviously was approved through a GPP several years ago. It will be constructed at some point in the future. These are three streets that do not exist today, but which it's being proposed to make into actual legit city streets. Tell us about the dynamic of each of them today, what's going on on each of them, and also just want to confirm, these are all owned by the state today? These, the slivers, we'll call slivers of land to be turned into streets, and also that the city's Department of Transportation and Environmental Protection are supportive of this change? Those are my questions.
Yeah, great question. So yeah, this was all owned by the state. The property and general has been conveyed to the developer. Yeah, so right now, there aren't any streets there. There are a couple of driveways that are used as access to interior parts. We're in a couple of those, those photos like that, not an actual street. So yes, these would be, when mapped, they would be transferred over to city ownership and maintained by DOT. DOT is working with the, well, applicant teams working with DOT to get the final DOT-approved designs for these streets. And also, yes, part of the reason why these are being mapped is for DEP infrastructure.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Osorio?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for the presentation. Two quick questions. One, I just wanted to confirm the certified wetlands are a little bit east, right? Or are they, are they actually sort of like within, like, the portion that we're looking at?
Certified wetland part. Yeah, I mean, I don't think anything on the property is, but I'll touch a double-
I think, I think, I mean, it would be worth checking.
Oh, for sure.
I think that in the, according to the DEP stormwater flood maps, the, this, there is a series of wetlands that I think sort of like are not, are just adjacent, but it sounds, it sounds like this is at the center of, sort of like, something that is slightly to the east, slightly to the west, and slightly to the south. Anyway, just worth checking. I guess my, my real question is, so there is both evidence that the site is, and that, or that these streets specifically are subject to flooding. They're currently in the, in the 500-year floodplain, but projected to be impacted by the 100-year floodplain. So, and also, in, according to the DEP maps, it sounds like they're even right now, sort of like, subject to stormwater inundation. So I'm just wondering, from, from, from our point of view, or in terms of what we are looking at, what do we anticipate? What do we assume? What do we anticipate? What do we need to check is happening in terms of, you know, addressing the vulnerability of the, of these roads to flooding before we actually fully map them?
Right. Yeah, I'm not sure what special precautions they may be taking other than, like, your, you know, standard roadway design DP infrastructure. I can certainly reach out and find out how they're handling that.
Yeah, thank you. That would be great. I, I, I think it would be, it would be important to understand whether they will be raised in addition to being mapped, or, or what are the type of infrastructure improvements that you were talking about seem to be already in motion.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Okay.
Oh, yes, go ahead.
And sorry, I just wanted to double-check the Build Year question. And so they're targeting the year 2030 to 2031 for the, for the final phase.
Great, thank you. Great. Thank you. Uh, thank you, Abraham. Uh, great job, and, uh, we'll look forward to seeing you again soon. And with that, this item is now certified. Thank you. Uh, okay, let's move on to the next.
The third item on our agenda is a certification of a zoning map and zoning text amendments in Brooklyn Community District 10. Our presenter is Kyra Cuevas.
All right. Hello. Happy post-Easter.
Your mic's not on. Oh, thank you. Good afternoon, Commissioners and Chair Garadnik. Today I will be presenting a private application for zoning map amendment and zoning text amendment at 25086th Street. This is a private application by Dr. Helen Kim to bring her future medical office at 25086th Street into compliance. The applicant is seeking a zoning map amendment from R3-2 in the Special Bay Ridge District to R6B and a zoning text amendment to map an MIH area to facilitate the compliance of a two-story mixed residential building with a proposed community facility use. No physical development is proposed as part of these actions. As you can see from this map, this project is located within Community District 10 in Bay Ridge, Brooklyn. The proposed development and project area are located within the southern portion of Bay Ridge, with Dyker Heights to the east and Fort Hamilton to the southeast. The entire project area is bounded by 86th Street, a 100-foot wide street on the north, Third Avenue, a 80-foot wide street on the east, 87th Street, a 80, eh, pardon me, 60-foot wide street on the south, and Rich Boulevard, an 80-foot wide street on the west. And just for your information, this image is looking north. The project area is located within an R3-2 zoning district and the Special Bay Ridge District. The R3-2 district permits low-density housing, including single-family detached homes and semi-detached one- and two-family homes. It is the lowest-density zoning district where multiple dwellings are permitted. This residential zoning district also permits community facility uses. R3-2 has a maximum building height of 35 feet with a floor area of .5 for residential land use and one for community facility. Additionally, the zoning district requires a series of yard requirements, including a 15-foot minimum front yard, a 30-foot minimum, minimum for rear yards, and eight to 16 feet for side yards. R3-2 districts require one parking space per dwelling unit. The surrounding area includes a range of low-to-mid-density residential zoning districts, with R2 to, to the north, R3-1 to the west, R4A to the south, and R6B to the east. The surrounding area is primarily residential with row homes, some detached, single- and two-family homes, and multi-family apartment buildings. The area is serviced by a local commercial corridor along Third Avenue, with office spaces for Realtors and lawyers, laundromats, grocery stores, banks, and restaurants between 83rd Street and 89th Street. Buildings along Third and Fourth Avenues are typically four-story buildings. Additionally, there are a handful of institutional resources within half a mile of the surrounding areas, including the Salvation Army Bay Ridge Corps Community Center, which is directly adjacent to the project area. Furthermore, there are numerous open space resources within half a mile of the surrounding area, including Monastery Square, Fort Hamilton Athletic Field, and the Shore Road Park. Transit access includes the R train at the 86th Street, um, stop, which is two blocks east of Fourth Avenue, and 86th Street along the, with the B16 bus, which transverses the borough to Leverett's Gardens Prospect Park, and the B37, which travels north to Atlantic Avenue Barclay Center. And just for reference, these are the images that you could see. In blue is the bus stops. In 1978, the Special Bay Ridge District was adopted to maintain an existing low-density residential and commercial characteristics throughout the density, throughout the district. The special district is bounded by Shore Road Drive on the north, Gowanus Expressway on the east, and Shore Road on the south and west. Since then, substantial modifications to the district were made in 2005 to further restrict bulk and FAR, where a maximum permitted FAR is established and the height of community facilities is limited to 32 feet. Furthermore, the special district limits the low-rise character of its one-to-three-family homes on the mid-blocks and encourages five-to-eight-story apartments with ground-floor commercial uses along the avenues. Here are pictures of the project area and the proposed project site, where the orange outline describes the project area and the yellow outline that you'll see later on indicates the proposed project site. The first image here shows a view from 86th Street facing southeast, where we can see lots 22 to 26. Lots 22, 23, 24, and 26 are each not applicant-owned and are overbuilt with FARs exceeding the .5 FAR limit of the R3-2 zoning. This image shows a view from 86th Street facing southeast, where we can see lots 28 to 35. Lot 28, the lot directly adjacent to the project site, is owned by the Salvation Army and is one of the two lots that is FAR compliant. The adjacent parcel, Lot 32, is a second lot, which is also FAR compliant. The lots on the far left are lots 32, that is pardon me, 34 and 35, which are overbuilt and are non-compliant residential buildings. Finally, this image shows the project site outlined in yellow, which is overbuilt with an FAR of 1.54. The applicant is proposing a zoning map amendment from an R3-2 zoning district to an R6B to ensure the building's compliance. R6B is a contextual zoning district that preserves the scale and harmonious streetscape of four-story row houses. This residential zoning district permits a residential FAR of two or 2.2 with inclusionary housing and a community facility FAR of 2.2 with a base height of 30 to 45 feet and a maximum height of 55 feet. Parking is required for half of the dwelling units. Additionally, there are no side and front yard minimum requirements. Currently, the building is built with an FAR of 1.54 and is therefore non-compliant with R3-2 district, which permits a residential FAR of .5 and a community facility FAR of 1. Furthermore, the future medical office use would be non-compliant with the sideyard regulations in an R3-2 district. Currently, the site is semi-detached, with the eastern side of the building abutting the lot owned by the Salvation Army, or Lot 26. In order for the building to comply with a residential use in R3-2 zoning, only one eight-foot sideyard is required. However, given the proposed use change to community facility in R3-2 zoning, two eight-foot sideyards are required. As noted in the previous slide, R6B zoning would bring this building into compliance. This is also true for seven of the nine lots in the project area. The applicant is also proposing a zoning text amendment to Appendix F to map MIH. Although there is no proposed development, the applicant is mapping MIH Option 1 and 2, each of which would require an income-restricted housing set aside, where Option 1 requires 25% of units at an average of 60% AMI, and Option 2, which requires 30% of units with an average of 80% AMI. There's also only one MIH area mapped in this area, which has not yet been approved, pardon, which has been approved in 2020, but has yet to be developed. As the project action may increase the residential FAR by 50,000 zoning square feet, and a racial equity report is required. It is important to note that the project area has the lowest displacement risk in South Brooklyn. The surrounding areas directly north and east, Dyker Heights and Sunset Park have the highest displacement risk. This phenomenon is exacerbated by the relatively high median household income in this neighborhood. For the median household income in this area is $79,766, which is higher than Brooklyn and New York City overall. Furthermore, the average income for 80% AMI households or estimated monthly rent for one unit is $1,597 or $1,766. As of 2020, Bay Ridge is comprised of a somewhat diverse population, more than half of which is white, a quarter of the residents of which are Asian, non-Hispanic, 2% of the neighborhood population is Black, non-Hispanic, which is significantly less than in Brooklyn and New York City overall, and finally Hispanics and Latinos of any race take up the remainder of the neighborhood at 17%. In summary, the applicant, eh, pardon, the applicant is proposing a zoning map amendment and a zoning text amendment to bring an existing building into FAR and sideyard compliance for a future community facility use. However, the site will be used as a doctor's office once the rezoning is approved. The two actions will not only bring the applicant's site into compliance, but will bring the surrounding lots into compliance as well, while mapping MIH for any future developments. I'm happy to take questions. Thanks so much.
Great. Thank you. Okay, so there's no actual physical changes to the building other than the inclusion of a doctor's office, future doctor's office, correct?
Correct.
Um, the, the building today is slightly over the FAR limit, 1.54 as opposed to 1.5.
That's correct.
Correct? Okay. And, um... The R6B would eliminate the sideyard requirement that otherwise would exist here for that community facility use. Is that right?
That's correct. Yeah.
Which is physically impossible based on the way that all is currently set up. Okay. And then when you look at the project area, uh, you mentioned that two of the buildings, one right next door and the one two over, those are currently compliant, but everything else is not. Is that correct?
Yes.
How many buildings did you say? Just give that to us.
There's, so there's nine, uh, lots or nine sites within this area, and the ones that are compliant have community facility. So the Salvation Army, for example, has a .87 FAR, but that's for community facility. Uh, the rest is residential, but some do have community facility, but as I mentioned before, the rest of them are non-compliant.
Got it. And this would bring them all into compliance?
That's correct.
Okay, thanks. Uh, Commissioner Reppershud?
Mm-hmm. It's in the first floor and basement. That I'm not aware of, but can get back to you about the ADA requirements.
Sure. Okay, great. Thanks very much. This item is now certified.
Great. Thank you so much.
Uh, the fourth item on our agenda is a certification of a zoning map and zoning text amendments, um, in special permits in Manhattan Community District 9. Our presenter is Olivia Olmos.
Hello, welcome.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Chair Garadnik. Just a minute to load. This is a private application by Crosscap Holdings to facilitate a seven-story mixed-use development with 60 units, 15 to 18 of which will be pursuant to MIH at 701 West 135th Street in West Harlem, Manhattan, Community District 9. The applicant's requesting a number of actions: a zoning map amendment to rezone the existing M11 manufacturing district to an R72 residential district with a C24 commercial district overlay; zoning text amendments to amend Appendix F of the zoning resolution to map MIH on the project area; add the project area to the boundaries of the special Manhattanville mixed-use district; and to ZR Section 10460 to allow a special permit to modify applicable bulk regulations for developments within or over a row of right-of-way; a special permit is pursuant to ZR 74681 to allow for the proposed development within or over a row of right-of-way; and a special permit is pursuant to the newly amended ZR 10460 to allow modification of the applicable rear yard and lot coverage requirements. This slide provides an aerial view of the surrounding area looking northwest. The development site outlined here in yellow is located at 701 West 135th Street on the corner of West 135th Street and 12th Avenue. To the west and north of the project site is the Henry Hudson Parkway and an active Amtrak line. To the east lies Riverside Park and the elevated Riverside Drive. The character of the immediate surrounding area below Riverside Drive is defined by parkland, transportation, utility, and industrial uses situated near the waterfront. While the part of the surrounding area east of Riverside Drive, elevated approximately 70 feet above the project area, is characterized by multifamily walk-up and elevator residential buildings and institutional uses. Additional open space in the area is provided by the Riverbanks State Park, located on the block northwest of site over the North River Wastewater Treatment Plant. The area is serviced by the 137th Street Station, located a few blocks east on Broadway and West 137th Street, providing access to the 1 train. The north and southbound M11 bus line is available at 126th Street and Amsterdam Avenue, providing service to and from the project area. This slide shows the area map with north at the top. The proposed project area outlined here in blue is zoned M11 for light industrial use and does not permit residential use. M12 and C62 districts are mapped immediately south of the project area, falling within the special Manhattanville mixed-use district, which was created in 2007 to promote greater density and varied land uses to support commercial and residential development, as well as Columbia's planned expansion. The special district encourages a community-oriented waterfront and active ground-floor uses along 12th Avenue. R8 is mapped to the east of Riverside Park, elevated approximately 70 feet above the project area. This view looks east to show the area context. The development site, highlighted in yellow, sits between the elevated Riverside Park and Riverside Drive, the highway, and the 12-foot above-grade elevated Amtrak rail. Pedestrian and vehicular access to the development site is from Broadway via West 138th Street, continuing down 12th Avenue. Site can be accessed via Riverside Park pedestrian path, although this is a non-ADA accessible path and it requires the use of stairs. The project area, outlined in a blue dashed line, has the same boundaries as the rezoning area and includes a portion of Lot 55, all of Lot 58, and a portion of Lot 60. Lot 58, which is the development site outlined in yellow and shaded dark gray, is a narrow, irregularly shaped lot at the corner of West 135th Street and 12th Avenue. Lot 55, which includes part of 12th Avenue, is a large lot owned by the Department of Parks and Recreation and is mostly occupied by parkland east of the Henry Hudson Highway. The portion of Lot 55 included in the project area includes up to the midline of West 135th Street and the midline of 12th Avenue along the eastern frontage of the development site. Lot 60 is owned by a private owner, PMP Realty Company, and it's a large, irregularly shaped lot that runs from West 135th Street to approximately West 145th Street, between the parkland to the east and the Henry Hudson Parkway to the west. The lot is mostly occupied by the railroad right-of-way and other transportation and utility uses. A portion of Lot 60 included in the project area extending along the western lot line of the development site to the edge of the railroad right-of-way is unimproved and utilized as parking. An elevated railroad right-of-way is located within a portion of the project area, including a portion of the development site, utilized pursuant to an easement by Amtrak as part of its northeast Empire Corridor Line. The limits of the railroad right-of-way that fall within the rezoning area are highlighted in purple. In this image, you can see the railroad right-of-way running through the development site. The portion of the project area that falls within the railroad right-of-way runs along the railroad tracks seen in this image, which sit directly above the western boundary of the development site footprint. This photo shows the project area with the development site outlined in yellow. The development site as it currently stands has a vacant, two-story, 42-foot-tall, 19,000-square-foot commercial building with a rooftop sign structure facing the highway. The site has a history of failed commercial tenancies, most recently as a used group six eating and drinking establishment. Here's a view of the only direct access to the development site via West 138th Street and 12th Avenue. The first image on the left shows the corner of West 138th Street and 12th Avenue, looking at Riverside Park. Second image on the right looks south down 12th Avenue, with the development site labeled in yellow. The images show the deteriorating conditions of the sidewalk down 12th Avenue. This sidewalk continues halfway down 12th Avenue on the east side of the street until it ends abruptly. The sidewalk continues from the midpoint of 12th Avenue on the west side of the street in front of the development site. As you can see, par, cars park along both sides of 12th Avenue. The Department of Transportation has confirmed that they have improvement plans for this portion of 12th Avenue that include new sidewalks on both sides as well as bike paths. The first image on the left shows the development site from the corner of West 135th Street. from the corner of West 135th Street and 12th Avenue. As you can see, a portion of 12th Avenue is blocked off due to a sinkhole on the street. Repairing the sinkhole is part of the DOT improvement plan. The second image on the right shows West 135th Street in front of the development site, looking down from the elevated Riverside Drive. Both images show the elevated Amtrak rail and highway immediately west of the development site. Below the highway, the Parks Department houses several utility uses, including vehicular parking and storage. The first image on the left looks at Riverside Park across the street from the development site, facing northeast from the intersection of West 135th Street and 12th Avenue. Behind the retaining wall to the east of the development site, residential uses are situated above Riverside Park and Riverside Drive. As you can see, the site is visually disconnected from the residential neighborhood above. The second image on the right shows the west facade of the development site under the elevated railroad track. The applicant is proposing a seven-story, 53,531-square-foot mixed-use building with 60 residential units, with 15 to 18 units income restricted pursuant to MIH at 60 to 80% AMI. This 4.46 FAR building will have a maximum height of 71.5 feet, or 82 feet to the top of the bulkhead. The proposed development would include a single story of retail and community facility uses with residential uses above. The proposed development's located next to the Amtrak Road right-of-way, which the sixth and seventh floors would cantilever over. The ground floor includes approximately 7,400 square feet of commercial space and approximately 700 square feet of community facility space. It also includes residential lobbies and amenities such as bike rooms, trash rooms, and laundry rooms. The remaining floors above the ground floor would include approximately 45,500 square feet of residential floor area and 60 residential units, of which about 15 to 18 will be income restricted pursuant to MIH options 1 or 2. You can see in the section drawings on the right and the rendering on the left, the applicant is proposing a cantilever of the sixth and seventh floors about 33 feet above the active Amtrak rail line. This neighborhood character diagram shows the differences in height between the Henry Hudson Parkway, the elevated Amtrak rail, the development site, and the residential buildings located east of the development site at a higher elevation above the retaining wall on Riverside Drive. This slide shows the neighborhood character distinctions between the east and west sides of 12th Avenue. The image on the top shows the west side of Riverside Drive and 12th Avenue between West 132nd Street and West 139th Street, facing northwest towards the development site. The image on the bottom shows the east side of Riverside Drive and 12th Avenue between West 139th Street and West 132nd Street, facing southeast away from the development site. To facilitate the proposed development, the applicant is requesting a number of actions, including a zoning map amendment, zoning text amendments, and special permits. I'll go into detail of each action in the following slides. The first requested action is a zoning map amendment. The map on the left shows the current zoning map, 5C and 6A, while the map on the right shows the proposed amendments to zoning map 5C and 6A, with the project area outlined in dark blue dashed line in both images. The boundaries of the special Manhattanville mixed-use district are outlined in a dotted teal line. The amendment would change the existing M11 manufacturing district underlying the project area to an R72 residential district with a C24 commercial district overlay. This zoning change supports a wider range of commercial, residential, and community facility uses. The map change would also extend the boundary of the special Manhattanville mixed-use districts to include the project area. The new R72-C24 district would allow for a maximum building height of 135 feet, a maximum residential FAR of 3.6 in the area zoned R72, a maximum residential FAR of 4.6 in the area zoned C24, a maximum commercial FAR of 2, and a maximum community facility FAR of 6.5. The second action is requesting an amendment to Appendix F of the zoning resolution to map MIH option 1 and option 2 on the project area. The third requested action is a zoning text amendment to amend the text of Article 10, Chapter 4, Appendix A of the zoning resolution to add the project area as other area within the special Manhattanville mixed-use district. This image shows the outline of the special Manhattanville mixed-use district located immediately below the project area, which is highlighted in yellow, including the boundaries of sub-districts A, B, C, and two additional other areas. The special Manhattanville mixed-use district is generally bounded by West 125th Street, West 135th Street, Broadway, and the Hudson River. The special district encourages the development of a mixed-use neighborhood with a revitalized, community-oriented waterfront that supports community facility, commercial, and manufacturing uses. The district provides opportunities for academic and scientific expansion while strengthening the retail and service corridor character and economic vitality through active ground floor uses along 12th Avenue. Additionally, the district aims to improve the streetscape through open space, sidewalk amenities, and landscaping, strengthening connection to the waterfront, and expanding local employment opportunities. Mapping the project area as other area will facilitate the development by enabling the use of the ZR 10460 special permit for the requested bulk modification. The fourth requested action is another zoning text amendment to amend ZR 10460, adding new text to allow a special permit to modify the applicable bulk regulations, except FAR regulations, for developments within and over a railroad right-of-way or transit right-of-way or yard. These bulk modifications may be granted provided they don't obstruct light and air to the surrounding area and are compatible with the character of the surrounding area. The fifth requested action is a special permit under ZR 74681 to allow development within and over a railroad right-of-way to facilitate the proposed cantilever over the railroad right-of-way, since a portion of the development site will be located over a railroad right-of-way. Under ZR 2241, railroad airspace may be developed or used only for a permitted use accessory to the railroad right-of-way or yard, or use permitted by the City Planning Commission as outlined in ZR 74681. Since the use of the proposed development is not accessory to the right-of-way, the applicant seeks this special permit to allow this portion to be included in the lot area of the proposed development. Amtrak, the owner of the easement over the railroad right-of-way, has provided letters of awareness of the ZR 74681 special permit application. They've indicated that no developments may occur over the right-of-way until the applicant acquires the necessary real estate rights from Amtrak. Lastly, the applicant is requesting a second special permit pursuant to the modified ZR Section 10460 to allow for the following bulk modifications. In the rear yard pursuant to ZR Sections 2347 and 3550, a 30-foot rear yard is required above the first story and beyond 100 feet of the intersection of West 135th Street and 12th Avenue. Regarding lot coverage pursuant to ZR Sections 22, 153, buildings constructed under the Quality Housing Program are allowed a lot coverage of 65% beyond 100 feet of the intersection of West 135th Street and 12th Avenue. Due to the narrowness of the development site, a feasible building with a complying rear yard and complying lot coverage cannot be constructed. Therefore, the applicant seeks this special permit to allow the City Planning Commission to permit the modification of the applicable bulk regulations for zoning lots that are eligible under ZR 78681, which pertains to developments within or over a railroad or transit right-of-way or yard. Pursuant to Local Law 78 of 2021, the application requires a racial equity report on housing and opportunity since it increases the permitted residential floor area by at least 50,000 square feet. The median household income in Hamilton Heights, Manhattanville, and West Harlem is approximately $56,881, lower than the median household income compared to all of Manhattan and all of New York City. Between 2010 and 2020, the Asian non-Hispanic population in Hamilton Heights, Manhattanville, and West Harlem increased by 43%. The area's black non-Hispanic population decreased by 14%. The area's Hispanic Latino population decreased by 10%. The area's white non-Hispanic population increased by 8%. Approximately 37% of the population of Community District 9 is Hispanic Latino. 28% of the population of Community District 9 is white non-Hispanic. 20% is black non-Hispanic, and 10% is Asian non-Hispanic. In summary, the applicant is seeking zoning map amendment, three zoning text amendments, and two special permits to facilitate a seven-story mixed-use development with 60 residential units, 15 to 18 of which will become income restricted pursuant to MIH at 60 to 80% AMI. This proposed development located next to and over an Amtrak railroad right-of-way would be a 53,531-square-foot mixed-use development with a single story of retail, community facility use, and residential lobbies with residential uses located above. The proposed 4.46 FAR building would have a maximum height of 71.5 feet, or 82 feet to the top of the bulkhead. Thank you, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Great, thank you. Uh, before I go over to Commissioner Benjamin, I will note it's a creative, uh, creative design uh, in an area which is pretty tough to navigate. I mean, as you, as you mentioned in your presentation, the only access point for a vehicle is west on 138th Street and north on 12th Avenue, and if you're, you're walking, you could go that route, or you can go down what is a very steep flight of stairs on 135th Street. So I, I am wondering a little bit, and I realize this is not the, the moment for this, as to what sort of, um, commercial base they would anticipate having in the base of this building, because, um, other than, um, a, a Parks building and an entry point for DEP's waste treatment, uh, plant, there really is not a whole lot going on over there. Um, I don't know if you have any insight on that yet, or if we should save that for another day?
Yeah, we could let the applicant speak a bit more to that, but as I mentioned, there's been a history of failed, uh, commercial tenancies in the past, mostly amongst restaurant uses. Um, so we'll let the applicant talk a bit more about that.
Okay, let me go to Commissioner Benjamin.
Hi, thank you so much for the presentation. I have two questions, and they have to do with the design elements of the building. The first is, um, many, many, for many, many years, um, Amtrak and others have talked about a TOFC facility in the Bronx, so that freight could come into New York via railroad. And it'd be trailers on... So are the dimensions where the building cantilevers such that a trailer on flat car could pass underneath? I don't want to forestall the possibility that we could have trailer on flat.
Yeah, so one of the, um, findings for the special permit is that the future use of that railroad is not impeded by any development, and the applicant has indicated that they've been working with the Amtrak to figure out how tall that cantilever should be. So right now it's about 33 feet above, um, but we can also confirm that with Amtrak. Um, Amtrak has said that they have looked at this, they're aware of the application, they've been working with the applicant, but they have not given sort of their support of the project yet. So we're still waiting to hear from them on that.
Okay, I'd really appreciate that in order to be able to make the findings, because I wouldn't want to preclude the use of trailers on flatbed. And the second is, the vertical portion, what are the dimensions? It doesn't seem like it's wide enough to have a double-loaded corridor. So what is the interior design?
Yeah, so they, um, have, I think it, it kind of goes, it varies throughout, but it's about 33 feet, I think, at its widest. Um, and they, so I, I don't think they have like a double corridor, probably a single corridor throughout, but yeah.
And so the, the hallway, so to speak, would be along the back, abutting the railroad?
Yeah, so it's, um, along the back, there's no windows there, and that's sort of where the, the corridor is, and all the units are facing, um, Riverside Park.
Okay. And are there any special measures that they are taking to deal with vibrations, noise, and potential issues of that type?
Yeah, so right now, the proposed actions include an E designation for noise, um, within the EAS, and we'll let the applicant speak a bit more to vibration-specific issues, but, um, yeah.
And there have been no manufacturing uses that have been interested in this location of which we're aware?
We can confirm with the applicant, but from what they've told us, because of the narrow site and just the site constraints here, um, they're very limited in what they're able to actually, you know, utilize the site for.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Reepershed?
Yeah, um, I had similar concerns as Commissioner Benjamin has raised with regards to the Amtrak. In, in terms of, I, I know they haven't given their full blessing yet on this project. One of the concerns I thought of right away was when they do track maintenance, you know? I live not too far from the J train. When they do the track repair, they have a crane up there. How does that work within the frontage of this building? Not only that, the, I guess they're proposing the masonry wall, brick wall. So when it comes to maintaining that wall, how does it work with the Amtrak? God forbid there's emergency repair that needs to be done. It'd be nice to know what the, what are the, I guess, conditions set forth within the agreement between Amtrak. And the last thing was, are they proposing any rooftop units along that portion that's within the, over the track at the roof? I, I didn't see any roof plans within our package, so I'm just curious of what they're doing then. The reason I bring that up is, units go, come and go, and you most likely need a crane to bring it up there. How does that work? Things like that, so. Just when it comes back to us, if they can get back to us on that.
Yeah, so I will confirm with them about the track maintenance issue, but, um, to answer your question, they are proposing units on the side that's facing, the cantilever facing the tracks.
Okay, so if they can at least send us, because I didn't see that in our package.
It should be in the drawings, but we can include it in the next...
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Sorio?
Thank you, Chair. Thanks for the presentation. Uh, quick, two questions. One, eh, regarding the vulnerability of the site to inundation. What are some of the provisions that have been discussed thus far? Because it's already in the 100-year-old plan.
Yeah, so the development site's located in the FEMA 1% annual chance floodplain, as well as the FEMA .2% annual, annual, uh, chance floodplain. So, you know, they've been thoughtful about locating on the lowest floor. Um, there's several vulnerable features, common facilities, retail space, electrical, switchgear, et cetera, but all of that will be constructed at a higher elevation. Um, the electrical switchgear and other critical equipment would be elevated on equipment pads, an additional floor above that for protection. Um, and mechanical equipment would be located on the roof, obviously. But the applicant will speak a little bit more in greater detail about their plan to build above the floodplain.
Thank you, thank you. And just to clarify that I understood what you said and what you said in the presentation. The, right now it's retail, community facility, with potential laundry spaces and things like that in addition to the lobby, to the building lobby and so forth in the first floor?
Yes.
Okay, um, okay, I look forward to learning more about that. The, the other comment is about the facade, eh, toward the park. It's interesting that, you know, that's where perhaps, eh, you could have a little more connection to the park or, or at least sort of like another option because of the fact that the other facade is going to be sort of like so... Yeah, this one. It seems like a little flat, at least exploring a little bit, sort of like openings, uh, connection to Riverside especially as you go out up, up the building.
Yeah, sure. Uh, there is a DOT improvement plan for the sidewalk condition, so you can see that a little bit in the rendering here. Um, but that will, you know, provide greater walkability in the area, perhaps connection to Riverside Park as well.
Yeah, we can ask the applicant to speak to the facade details and if they've thought about, you know, adding those.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Dweck?
Thank you. It seems like a, a lot of the questions are related to the cantilever. Why, ha, ha, has, has the applicant thought of just building this to the ninety-five feet allowed under R-seven-A and do away with the cantilever completely? And what would be the constraints, uh, if that was the case?
Um, yeah, so one of the sort of priorities for the community here as well, as I think the applicant in response to the community, was to make sure that they don't block, um, the access for Riverside, the visual access, uh, I'm trying to get to character drawings. Um, yeah, so if you can see here, the development site sort of sits below the Riverside Drive so that, that the, the elevated, uh, you know, Riverside Drive and, and the buildings, residential buildings there, um, this development site would not block that, um, uh, you know, that view. Uh, and this was something that they really kind of worked with the community to come up with that seventy-one-point-five height, um, to respect that, uh, character.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Gold?
Hi, thanks. Uh, another cantilever question. It's, it certainly is, uh, different, different than what we've seen. Um, so as we think about it as city planning commission, what are the, what's essentially the finding from our side, uh, for that, uh, to be okay? To get that, you know, they have to work through Amtrak with whatever issues and, uh, the air rights. But, um, is it, you know, what, what's sort of in there? Um, and I, I mean, I assume the safety aspect of it isn't us, but, you know, what, what do we have to find for that to be okay?
So there's a number of findings. Um, I think we, so we've included that in your packet, but, uh, you know, just to go briefly, it talks about, um, streets providing access, um, to all the uses, um, the uses within the building, uh, you know, not being, uh, the uses within the building being compatible with each other. So the, the retail and, in this case, the commercial facility and the residential. Um, and then all of the uses and developments and enlarges have to be located within a single zoning lot. That would be, you know, um, part of the development. And then, uh, one important one, which I mentioned earlier, is that the railroad, um, is, uh, that whatever the development is, it's, the, they're able to have future transportation use, and it doesn't impede future transportation use. Um, there's sort of additional, uh, railroad, um, related findings, um, that have to do with, um, ownership of rights and things like that. So, um, you know, I've listed all of them in here, but also in the packet, and I can send that as well.
And the piece, I think, I want to do stand a little better, though, is specific to the cantilever.
Yeah.
Right, um, because obviously some of those are, you know, traditional findings, um, for what they're looking for. They have nothing to do with the cantilever. They'd refer any, any building that were adjacent to a railroad. But specific to the cantilever, are there, uh, finding, no, there's nothing specific to that?
No, it's just, you know, it's about, uh, development in general over and, um, up, you know, under railroad, uh, right-of-ways. Um, there's no specific things of like whether it's a cantilever or if it's a platform or anything like that.
Got it, thank you.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. Uh, and with that, we appreciate, uh, the presentation. This item is now certified. We'll look forward to picking it up shortly. Thank you. Okay, let's move on to the next.
This item on our agenda is a non-URB referral of a zoning authorization in Manhattan Community District Two. Our presenter is Ben Huff.
All right, Ben.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. So this application on behalf of HADSW LLC pursuant to Section thirteen-four-four-two of the zoning resolution for an authorization to allow an off-street automated parking facility with a maximum capacity of seven spaces in the existing nine-story building located at six-oh-one Washington Street in the Hudson Square area of Manhattan Community District Two. The building, which has no current parking spaces, is located within an M-one-five, R-seven-X special mixed-use district within the Manhattan Core and has ten dwelling units. The proposed parking facility is intended to serve as an added amenity for residents of the building and would provide a safe and convenient place for parking. Use of Section thirteen-four-four-two for recently completed building is not subject to URB under Section thirteen-four-five. The project area is an approximately eight-thousand-nine-hundred-and-twenty-eight-square-foot rectangular lot with approximately fifty feet of frontage on Washington Street and Greenwich Street respectively, and approximately a hundred-and-seventy-six of square feet of, uh, excuse me, feet of frontage on Leroy Street. The project area is improved with a recently constructed nine-story building that has forty-four thousand five-hundred-and-eighty-three square feet of floor area and the ten dwelling units. As stated, the current building does not contain any parking spaces. Land uses for the project area include a mix of one-family residential buildings, one- and two-family residential buildings, commercial and office uses, industrial, um, there's public facility and some institutional uses. The built form in the surrounding area is generally characterized by large floor-plated buildings ranging up to fourteen stories in height with smaller floor-plated buildings ranging from one to six stories interspersed. Other notable uses in the surrounding area include the West Side Highway, Route nine-A to the west, and the James J. Walker Park to the east. Public transportation in this surrounding area includes the Houston Street One subway station, approximately two-point-five miles to the southeast of the project area at Houston Street and Seventh Avenue, as well as the Christopher Street Path Station, approximately point-two miles to the north at Christopher Street and Greenwich Street. Um, bike share routes run along both Greenwich and Havemeyer Streets, and the M-twenty bus heads north on Hudson Street. Zoning within the surrounding area is predominantly M-one-five with smaller C-one-six, C-one-six-A, C-six-four, and M-one-five-R-seven-X districts located on the periphery. C-one-six zoning is generally mapped along portions of Hudson Street to the east. C-one-six-A is mapped to the west on Washington Street to the north of Morton Street. C-six-four is mapped to the west of Washington, Washington Street and to the south of Clarkson Street. In two thousand eight, the CPC approved a private application for Hudson Square North rezoning, which involved the rezoning of the same five-and-a-half-block northern area of Hudson Square that had been removed from the two thousand three rezoning by the city council. The area was rezoned from an M-one-five district to an M-one-five-R-seven-X special mixed-use district. Uh, this rezoning was intended to facilitate the conversion and redevelopment of underutilized privately-owned property with residential uses. In two thousand thirteen, the Manhattan Core text amendment updated zoning resolution, zoning regulations governing the provision of off-street parking in the Manhattan Core, which consists of Manhattan Community Districts one through eight and includes the project area. No parking is required within the Manhattan Core. The zoning text amendment identified the circumstances under which parking is permitted and a maximum of twenty percent is allowed as of right in the area where the project site is. Prior to construction of the existing nine-story building, the project area was occupied by a one-story warehouse building which had three curb cuts along Leroy Street. From the west, the first curb cut measured ten feet, the second nineteen feet four inches, and the third thirty-six feet. In two thousand fifteen, the applicant proposed the elimination of the first and second curb cuts and a reduction of the third curb cut from thirty-six feet to ten feet, as well as the shift three feet six inches to the east, approximately thirty feet from the corner of Leroy and Greenwich Street. At the time, the third curb cut was intended to provide access to one residential parking space. The applicant requested a zoning resolution determination from the Department of Buildings to certify pursuant to ZR thirteen-two-four-one that the proposed location is not hazardous to traffic, traffic safety, is not likely to create traffic congestion, and will not unduly inhibit surface traffic or pedestrian flow, and accepted the proposed curb cut location within fifty feet of an intersection. Uh, the Department of Buildings approved the request, um, in two thousand fifteen on the condition that the curb cut be limited to a maximum width of twelve feet, including splays, as stated in ZR twenty-five-six-three-one. This request was re-approved by the Department of Buildings in May of two thousand eighteen. So on this slide, we can, uh, see a few site photos of the project. On the left, the photo is facing east showing the entrance along Washington Street. The photo on the right shows the longer frontage along Leroy Street with a garage door visible. So next, I'm going to go through the operations of the automated parking facility. The entrance and exit to the parking facility would occupy approximately three-hundred-and-fifty-five square feet on the ground floor of the building and would be accessed by the twelve-foot curb cut, including splays, on the Leroy Street frontage approximately thirty feet from the intersection of Greenwich Street. An automated lift would shuffle vehicles between the entrance-exit on the ground floor and two tiers of vehicle storage space on the cellar level below. Inbound drivers would approach from the east on Leroy Street and activate the garage's mechanical door with a garage door opener. The garage door will open, and warning indicators outside the garage will flash red. Upon entering the garage, the vehicle will be positioned on a parking pallet. Once the parking screen turns green, indicating that the vehicle is properly positioned on the pallet, the driver turns off the vehicle and exits. As this is a car storage system, all vehicles must be turned off to enter the system. The garage will be equipped with carbon monoxide sensors that will sound an alarm and turn on the ventilation fans if carbon monoxide is detected. At the parking screen, which is located outside of the garage along the building's facade, the driver will swipe their fob and confirm a series of safety questions, including that the car is turned off, that there is no one in the car, and the parking brake is engaged. Uh, the vehicle will then be lowered into the parking area by the automated system. Once it is below the slab, the vehicle will be rotated so it will be facing out when the car is retrieved for departure. The vehicle will then be moved laterally to the first available space by the automated system. In the event that six vehicles are parked within the automated parking facility and a seventh vehicle enters, four vehicles would be parked on the lower tier and two vehicles would be parked on the upper tier. The seventh car would be lowered into the parking area, rotated by the automated system, then shuffled into one of the two available spaces adjacent to the elevator used for the turntable clearance. All other vehicles would have already been rotated and ready to exit, so the seventh car would not block the turntable. The final open space adjacent to the elevator at the turntable level would be used as the shuffle space for vehicles to be moved prior to any vehicle's exit. Drivers retrieve their vehicles by swiping their fob at the garage parking screen. The automated system moves the vehicles to the lift in the parking level, and the car is lifted to the entry bay. Once the vehicle is positioned at the entry bay, the garage door opens. The driver can then enter the car and prepare to exit the building. A stop sign within the garage would be clearly visible to exiting drivers, and a speed bump would be located within the entrance, entrance-exit lane to slow down exiting vehicles prior to crossing the sidewalk. Along with visually checking left and right before entering the street, pedestrian motion sensors and mirrors will assist the driver in ensuring that the pla, the path is clear and safe. Once the car is clear of the garage door sensors, the dra, the, the door will close. So I have here the text of ZR thirteen-four-four-two. As shown in the statement of findings and discussion of conditions that accompany this application, the proposed automated parking facility satisfies the requirements for the requested authorization pursuant ZR thirteen-four-four-two and meets the conditions set forth in ZR thirteen-twenty. The proposed parking facility is intended to serve as an added amenity for the residents and would provide residents with a safe and convenient place for parking. So I wanted to zoom in on the findings here, just to go over what the commission, uh, will look at. Given that proposed parking garage's distance from public facilities, including access points to mass transit facilities, the low pedestrian volumes along Leroy Street in proximity to the proposed parking garage's entrance and exit, and the low number of forecasted vehicle trips entering and exiting the proposed parking garage, it can be concluded that the proposed garage will not result in any undue conflict between pedestrians and vehicles at this location. As the facility would not unduly interrupt the flow of pedestrian traffic or result in any undue conflict between pedestrian-vehicle movements, the application, um, is, you know, as stated in the application, it is looking to meet these findings. So to conclude the presentation, this applicant is seeking, um, ZR thirteen-four-four-two authorization for seven parking spaces within an automated facility, and the building contains ten dwelling units. Uh, with that, I'm happy to take any questions.
Okay, let me see if there are questions. Vice Chair Knuckles, sorry.
Thank you, thank you, Chair. Uh, thank you for the presentation. I just, um, have a couple of questions. So this is a demand that, uh, the parking was not contemplated at the time that the building was completed. This is a demand that has grown out of the, the occupancy of, of the building?
That's correct. We, we asked that question to the applicant, um, you know, when they looked originally at building the building, they looked at one parking space, um, just with the cost of it. They deemed that was too high and wouldn't be as much of an amenity to the building. Um, their response was that, uh, after COVID-nineteen in twenty-twenty, there was a larger demand, uh, from tenants of the building for safe and convenient parking, and that's when they explored this authorization.
Is, is this a rental or a co-op or condo, or do you know?
I believe it's a co-op.
Okay. Um, okay, uh, going back to the mechanics of accessing, uh, a vehicle, um, so if, if, if you're a tenant and you want to, uh, uh, get your vehicle, do you have to come outside and, and fob and then wait for the, uh, vehicle to come up? That's what it sounds like?
Yes.
Okay. So you come outside, you fob whatever that is and, uh...
It'd find your vehicle, will shuffle it up to the, uh, bay that will bring it up to street level.
Okay. Uh, and similarly, when you bring it in, you have to come out and then go into the entrance of, of the building? Is there, is, can you access the building from within that, or you have to come out? I assume you have to come out and then go into the entrance of the building? Is that the way it works?
From the way it was described to me, it seems like the, the facility to access the parking is adjacent to the garage door, um, not in the lobby, but I, I'll ask the applicant to confirm that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. Commissioner Benjamin?
Hi, thank you for the presentation. Just one quick question. I know the Buildings Department has had issues with automated parking, even when there is an attendant. Um, has the Buildings Department looked at this particular proposal and made a determination that they find this level of automation and the type of automation that's being used compliant with their requirements?
That's a really good question. Um, I'm, don't have an answer off the top of my head, but I can, we can reach out to the Department of Buildings and see if they have any feedback on the automated facilities.
Okay, I would appreciate that.
Yeah.
Sorry, just to, uh, issue a clarification, Vice Chair Knuckles. The building is a condo, um, not a co-op.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioner Benjamin. Commissioner Sorio?
Thank you, Chair. Thanks for the presentation. Uh, quick question. Can you tell us something, can you tell us a little bit about the, eh, type of sustainability amenities in the building? Not, not necessarily a, within sort of like, uh, or at least as built right now. I mean, is there a plan to offset somehow the additional energy charger usage from the automated parking facility? You know, how can we, what has, has this come up in discussions with the applicant? Is there a room to encourage somewhat, eh, like that? You know, the city's doing a big effort to reduce your carbon emissions, and I'm wondering, you know, how can we be mindful about increasing energy loads at a time where we should be, be being very careful about that?
Um, thank you for the question. That, that's a good question. We did inquire about would the automated parking facility have electric charging capabilities? The applicant responded it would.
Yeah.
Um, but as far as how they're fitting that into the overall sustainability, the building, uh, any offsets, uh, I don't have that answer off the top of my head, but I, I can go back to them and ask.
Thank you. I would appreciate that. And then just to, eh, triple-check, this is only intended for residents of the building, right? There's no intention to offer public parking or anything like that?
That's correct, yeah. Um, they, and we asked them how they would prioritize these parking spaces. They, and we asked them how they would prioritize these parking spaces, because there's only seven, but it's a ten-unit building and that they're sort of, it'll be sort of sold at like a market rate, you know, first come, first served, and at a particular price that it costs for them to add the amenity.
Do we know how much are they marketing these spaces for?
We don't know at this time how much they plan to charge for them, no.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you very much, Ben. I don't see any further questions for you, so we will refer this one out to the Community Board for forty-five days, and we'll pick it up then. Thank you.
The sixth item on our agenda is a pre-hearing review for a disposition of city-owned property in Queens Community District eleven. Our presenter is Scott Solomon.
Good afternoon, Commissioners again. Just wait for the slides to pop up, and we can move on to the second slide. Great, is it seen on your end?
Not yet, give us a sec.
We can see it now.
Okay, great, thank you. I'm amazed how I can see in Queens that much earlier than you can downtown. So this is an application by the New York City Department of Citywide Administrative Services, or DECAST, to facilitate the disposition of four small surplus city-owned properties in the Douglasston and Little Neck neighborhoods of Queens Community District eleven, or Eastern Queens. This application was certified on December eleventh, coming back for hearing on Wednesday. Next slide, please. So the sites include Block eight-two-six-zero, Lot two-twenty-six, referred as Site One, Block eight-one-three-six, Lot one-twenty-nine, and Lot seventy-four, Sites Two and Three, and Block eighty-one-eighty-five, Lot fifty-eight, Site Four, shown further south. These sites are deemed surplus properties because they're small lot area and street frontage that cannot be used to fulfill any agency need as they meet DECAST's definition of sliver lots. These are lots that are either less than ten feet wide in any dimension or contain less than a thousand square feet of floor area. Per DECAST, these lots are not suitable for development in their own right. DECAST is seeking disposition approval of the four city-owned surplus properties to provide the city flexibility and authority to dispose of these sites in the future. Facilitating disposition approval for these lots would allow the city to sell these properties to their respective adjacent property owners, which they do either by auction or direct sale. Next slide. So following certification, Queens Community District eleven held a public hearing on this application on February fifth, and they issued a resolution for a conditional approval. They actually held separate votes. They sort of separated their own applications, which resulted in a conditional approval. They were supportive of all the dispositions except for Site Four, for the minutes that were provided from that CB meeting. They oftentimes will defer to local civics. The civic in this location expressed concern that the site is already used, that's this informal pathway. They prefer the site to stay in the city domain, and that was the reason for them to approve of that particular site. Next slide, please. And then the Queens Borough President recommended approval of this application without any conditions, and that concludes the presentation for the pre-hearing.
Great, thank you, Scott.
Commissioner Benjamin?
In reading the material, I noted that this site, Block eighty-one-eighty-five, Lot fifty-eight, Site Four in your list, was previously approved for disposition by the Board of Estimate. Why do we need another approval?
I'll have to follow up, but there is, I think I saw some language from the lead planner on this that, I don't know if it's expiration of date, but that they have to, they were told that they have to follow up with another disposition of the property. But we could follow up with guidance on that.
Okay, I would like to understand that because I'm not aware that the Board of Estimate put time limits on their disposition resolutions. So I'd be very, very curious about why we're doing it again.
We could follow up prior to the hearing, likely even by the end of today, directly to the Commission.
Okay, that'd be great, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Benjamin. Okay, thank you. We'll pick this one up for a public hearing on Wednesday.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Scott.
The seventh item on our agenda is a pre-hearing review for an acquisition in a city map amendment in Brooklyn Community District Six. Our presenter is Emily Bachman.
Hi, Emily.
Hello. Great. This is the pre-hearing review for the land use actions associated with Red Hook Coastal Resiliency. This is a joint application from four city agencies, the New York City Departments of Design and Construction, Transportation, Citywide Administrative Services, and Parks and Recreation, for changes to the city map and acquisitions to facilitate the construction, operation, and maintenance of the Red Hook Coastal Resiliency Neighborhood Flood Protection System in Red Hook, Brooklyn, Community District Six. The application was certified on December eleventh of last year, and the public hearing is scheduled for Wednesday, April third. The proposed project is a system of floodwalls, raised street grades, deployable floodgates, and other supporting infrastructure funded by a fifty-million-dollar FEMA grant matched by a fifteen-million-dollar city match that would tie together existing high points in the neighborhood to provide passive flood protection to an elevation of eight feet with deployable features activated ahead of a storm, providing additional protection to an elevation of ten feet. The project is designed to protect the neighborhood from a storm that has a ten percent chance of taking place every year with a base flood elevation of seven feet. The project also accounts for thirty inches of sea level rise and six inches of freeboard to bring the overall design flood elevation to ten feet. This elevation means protection from ninety-nine point nine percent of all coastal storms that have impacted Red Hook in the past while accounting for future sea level rise. The project is also designed to minimize impacts on waterfront access and views and to allow for construction of the working, or continuation of the working waterfront, and the design maximizes the use of the city right-of-way and includes an expansion to the Brooklyn Waterfront Greenway and other streets gave green infrastructure and drainage improvements. To facilitate the proposed project, the applicants are requesting changes to the city map highlighted in this plan in yellow. This includes changes in legal street grades, the mapping of Sullivan Street west of Ferris Street, and mapping new parkland to enlarge Todd Triangle. And while the proposed project would be developed primarily on city-owned property in the public right-of-way, the city is seeking acquisition approval, bless you, to facilitate easements that would allow the city to operate, inspect, and maintain the flood protection system from adjacent private lots. The city will seek easements roughly fifteen feet wide adjacent to each flood wall and gate, and all existing structures, businesses, and homes subject to the acquisition action are proposed to remain. On February twenty-first, twenty twenty-four, the Brooklyn Community Board Six voted with twenty-six in favor, zero in opposition, and two abstentions to approve the application with the following conditions: that the data informing the design be updated to reflect the current reality of flooding in Red Hook; that the proposed project should not exclude several large buildings, small businesses, and a supermarket at the end of Van Brunt Street; and that the community must be regularly and actively engaged, informed, and consulted as it deals with the reality and needs of resiliency in Red Hook in real time. On February twenty-eighth, the Brooklyn Borough President held a public hearing on this application, and on March twentieth submitted a recommendation to approve with the condition that the Department of Transportation alter the design of the proposed raised intersections to include additional paint or a change in pavement material, and further stated that the Department of Transportation, Department of, and Department of Environmental Protection should coordinate their stewardship and maintenance of the floodwalls with the city's Chief Public Realm Officer, and that the Department of Environmental Protection should commit to additional public engagement to update the public on the status of sewer improvements with regard to preventing the bathtub effect. That concludes my presentation. I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Emily. Commissioner Benjamin?
Do you know why the IKEA site and the former Fairways, now Food Bazaar, were not included in these measures? Did they, I remember when the projects were coming through U-Lab, I don't remember that they did any particular resiliency work other than the fact that at Fairways, they already had a bulkhead because they have the ferry, but the bulkhead was not built to the hundred-year floodplain, as far as I know. So in constructing this resiliency plan, do you know why those sites were not included behind the walls?
Yeah, so the, there was a feasibility study conducted in twenty sixteen that assessed three different potential alignments. The first and most complex and expensive of which would have been the shoreline. That's complicated in Red Hook because the coastline is almost all privately owned, and there was concern about risk if there wouldn't be public access for the city to maintain the system. So if a piece of the flood protection system located on private property was compromised in some way and the city couldn't gain access, that would compromise the entire system. Ultimately, the city chose this alignment, which significantly reduces costs and was important in that it met the community priority of maintaining a working waterfront and access to the waterfront. I will say the IKEA site was designed to be resilient to flooding. I don't have the specific number in my mind, but I think it's, I think it's designed for the one-hundred-year flood.
I thought it was the twenty-year.
I will check. Yeah, let's not put that on the record. And this project, I do have a quick slide to show because the Community Board had this recommendation about including the properties that are outside of the line of protection on this slide, so the Beard Street warehouses and the former Fairway, current Food Bazaar. The project is, did coordinate with these properties and is providing, there's, see this little rectangle that's kind of a closed rectangle outside of the line of protection?
Right, that's in the Fairways parking lot.
Yeah, so that is electrical equipment that supports all of those businesses outside of the line of protection. So that is a benefit that would be provided to those properties if this project was forward as planned.
Well, except that there is a public street. Van Brunt does go all the way down to the water. So the rationale that it's on private property, that the street is not on it, that's our street, and presumably we, it could extend all the way down to the end of Van Brunt.
On either side of Van Brunt?
Yeah, I'm just concerned that in the event of a severe flood, that the pressure that will build up against those gates because you have this big structure sitting outside.
Okay. I'm definitely going to let the applicant team respond to that, and the engineers on the applicant team, but yeah, I think...
Okay, and then the other question is whether there are sewer outfalls there because the Community Board was very concerned about the outfalls and how they would be affected should an event occur. And should surcharging occur because water is infiltrating into the sewer system instead of going the opposite way? So I'd be curious if around both the former Fairways, now Food Bazaar site, and around IKEA, whether there are outfalls and how they are being treated in this, if it's part of the plan or if it's part of DEP's capital budget, are they putting gates on the outfalls if they have outfalls? How is that all working for those properties?
Yeah, so all of the sewer outfalls in the neighborhood are proposed to have one-way valves added to them as part of this project to prevent seawater from flooding in through the sewer in case of high tides. And then separate from this project, this project is designed solely to address flood risk from...
Stormwater.
From stormwater, from coastal flood risk. Separate from this, DEP and DDC are also advancing the Columbia Street Water and Sewer Project, which includes replacement of twenty-seven-hundred feet of combined sewers to mitigate sewer backups and other flooding conditions caused by increasing the size of the sewers. So that's happening parallel to this and separate from this project.
Okay, if you could ask DEP for just a map of where...
Yeah.
Where the outfalls are and the outfalls that are attached to the lines, the sewer lines that are being increased in size and capacity. I'd appreciate, I still have some concerns about since, as you, there are the two streets and then there's that little kind of basin area. Is that privately owned also? Where the, that ship is, that boat? And the train thing?
The boat and the train thing. There's a, there's a pretty complex mix of ownership here. I don't, I don't have it all outlined, and I don't want to speak inaccurately. So I'll make sure that we get both a map of the CSO outfalls, a map of the ongoing sewer work, and some information about ownership.
Yeah. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Osorio?
Thank you, Chair. Thanks for the presentation. I'm wondering if in addition to the items listed, you can also, we can also understand how far in with Sandy, what were the Sandy impacted areas in relation to the areas, to the basically the proposal? Is it possible to get a copy of the results of the assessment that you referenced, basically the research that was developed toward this?
The twenty sixteen? Yes, absolutely.
Okay, thank you. The other question that I had, so I'm wondering if you can, thanks so much for outlining so clearly the feedback that the Community Board gave and the Board President. I'm wondering, you know, what's been sort of like the preliminary response specifically to, well, I mean, on one end, the question on data and whether the data used is sort of like using the latest one, I think that it's along the lines, along those lines what the Community Board says. I'm wondering if you can clarify what they mean and what is the dataset that was used?
So yes, the applicant did provide a response to that. The data used in this project covered a ninety-five-year period from nineteen twenty-seven to twenty twenty-one, and then a cursory review of available data through twenty twenty-three has also been reviewed, and there have not been any changes to sea levels or anticipated sea level rise that would impact the efficacy of the current design between that twenty twenty-one year and twenty twenty-three. The current design does take into account rising sea levels using twenty-eighties high estimates, and yeah, I think that's the full answer.
Twenty-eighty, not twenty-one-hundred?
That is my understanding, yeah.
Can we understand why? I mean, why aren't we using the maximum there? I'm sure there's a reason for that, but also what are the projections that are used? Because the New York Panel on Climate Change, I think, has issued one around there, and I want to make sure that we can fully answer their question from the board.
Okay.
The other question that I had is, so the other comment and building on Commissioner Benjamin's question, so there's, I think, a concern that large buildings are not included. And so, you know, in what I've seen, the, some of the last mile facilities, six forty, Columbia Street, et cetera, are also outside. And so I'm wondering, since a lot of these have also been developed after the assessment, I'm wondering, you know, what's the sort of like assessment right now? I mean, is this, has it been, sort of like, has this been evaluated? How do we respond to the fact that, you know, we have big uses there that might be compromised?
So the new, the last mile facility outside of the line of protection, the two of them, one currently in operation and one, I believe, close to being in operation, were both constructed to, very recently. So those site-specific resiliency measures were taken to protect those sites from a hundred-year flood. This project is taking place on the street adjacent to them and will, and was designed in coordination with all of the... and will, and was designed in coordination with all of the adjacent properties and all the properties outside of the line of protection. Um, my understanding is that it will benefit them, but benefit the entire neighborhood by providing protection for the whole neighborhood and also improving the, the street workability, especially in case of flooding.
But these principles are outside of the protected area, right?
Correct, but they're, they have site-specific resiliency measures to protect them from flooding.
As any other industrial, newly developed industrial building would have.
Correct, or any use, yeah.
But um, but so, so, okay, thank you, that's, that's really useful. And one last question, which is, in, in building on the borough president's comments about the potential for additional permeability or to, you know, where it's possible, acknowledging the situation that Commissioner Benjamin brings up in terms of the relationship with CSOs and so forth. What's been the general response? I mean, is there a potential here for green infrastructure in addition to hard barriers? And if so, where, what does that look like? And so on.
Yeah, so um, one of the things that came up in public review was um, some, uh, not just nature-based solutions, green infrastructure, but a soft edge. Um, and the soft edge idea um, requires being located on the water's edge. Um, so that um, wasn't possible as part of this project because it's, it's not taking place along the shoreline. Um, this project does incorporate um, some green infrastructure, particularly tree planting, um, median planting um, within it. But the, it is primarily um, not a green infrastructure. I mean, it's, it's part of the overall design, but um, it's not a soft edge solution.
Oh, thank you, Emily.
Thank you, I appreciate that. But I'll, I think that the, to, to build on Commissioner Benjamin's point, this is not just about the surface. Where is the water going or where is it being conducted? And if you're saying that there's a parallel effort to upgrade the sewer, we should be seeing exactly at these, at these two things, sort of like in, 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 as they seek to each other.
Okay.
One other suggestion, I mean, I, I think that considering the, the importance and the magnitude of this investment, but also the fact that there's so many different agencies, it sounds to be that it would be useful to consolidate all the information in one place in general. You know, the, the questions about where exactly are the DEP? What is the nature and extent of those sewer upgrades and so forth? It should be presented along lines, along the lines of this. If, if you can include any of that at the public hearing, I think it'll be really useful just to make sure that everything is in context.
Noted, yeah, that was part of the, the community board and borough president presentations. And um, I'll make sure the applicant team is ready to, to give you all of the information from all the relevant agencies.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. Okay, thank you very much. We'll pick this one up on Wednesday, thanks Emily.
Thank you.
Okay, the eighth item on our agenda is a pre-hearing review for site selection and acquisition in Brooklyn Community District 7. I'll note this item will be a continued hearing from the March 20th public hearing and was presented at the review session on March 18th. Also, uh, there were follow-up letters in your weekend materials. Uh, Jukey Sai is joining us today on Zoom, should there be any questions.
Thank you. Let me see um, if there are any members of the public wishing to testify, there are not. Uh, and let me see if there are any questions. There are not, so uh, I will now close the hearing, no?
We'll close on Wednesday.
We'll close on Wednesday, okay, got it, thank you. Oh. Hi Jukey. I'm sorry, we're gonna be picking, I'm sorry, we're gonna be doing this hearing, we'll be continuing the hearing on Wednesday, sorry. Ignore everything I said for the last 60 seconds, let me do that again and just note, on Wednesday, we will reopen the hearing, okay? And then we will look to see why uh, there are no members of the public wishing to testify. Today's not the day, Wednesday's the day, if you're watching, thank you.
Okay, the ninth item on our agenda is a pre-hearing review for a major concession in Manhattan Community District 5. I'll note this will also be a continued hearing uh, from the March 20th public hearing and was presented at the review session on March 18th. Joaniele Clark is here to present and available for any questions.
You have a presentation to make or you?
Yeah, I have a couple of slides.
Let's get, let's give her a second to present and then we'll, we'll get questions.
Since it was a continued hearing, I just thought we were.
Yeah, we've got an election. Sorry, I'm concluding the work.
Okay, good afternoon, commissioners. Um, and to just quickly recap, um, this is an application by the New York City Department of Transportation, who's seeking a major concession um, in an area along Broadway from West 41st to West 53rd Street. And there's currently 38,000 square feet of concession area and they're looking to expand this an additional 214,000 square feet. Um, so as was previously mentioned, um, this is at the public hearing on March 20th and there were a few questions regarding um, the proposed length of the concession um, as well as wayfinding signage and pedestrian safety. Am I doing the right by? Okay, um, and so the applicant, to answer the question about the anticipated length of the proposed concession, the applicant is expecting an initial five-year term with three um, following five-year renewal terms um, for a total proposed length of um, twen- or yes, to not exceed 20 years. Um, and then to speak to the question about pedestrian safety, the applicant provided us with some um, statistics. So there was a three-year period between um, 2006 and 2008 where um, there was about 65% of, or wait, no, I'm, I'm sorry. Um, so the applicant provided us with pedestrian uh, safety statistics. Um, and there was a three-year period from 2006 to 2008 where uh, instances that crashes occurred um, ended with 40% of injuries for pedestrians. And um, in the most recent years, from 2020 to 2023, that number has dropped to 14% of crashes ending with pedestrian inju- injuries. So overall, there's been a 65% decrease in um, crashes that end with pedestrian injuries. And overall, um, there's been a 36% decrease in all crashes that end in injuries. The one area that there were not, um, uh, that there was not a decrease in injuries was with cyclists. And so we're still working with the applicant to get further information on these statistics as well as uh, to get photos of the wayfinding that was um, referenced at the public hearing. So those are the facts that I have to share today and if there's any questions, I'm happy to take any.
Great, thank you very much, Commissioner Benjamin.
Yes, I had looked at the, the data that the applicant provided about the accidents and there's two categories where there was an increase. It was bicycles, but also other motorized vehicles. And the first question is, is it only injuries to pedestrians as a result of crashes with any of those items? Or do they also reflect injuries to others? Somebody on a bicycle who is injured in a crash with a motorized vehicle or with a pedestrian?
That's an excellent question and we are following up with the applicant, DOT, to get more specifics on this, but that is, you know, a very good question as to whether it's also the folks who are using these vehicles. I mean, as you can see, there's zero for the other motorized because they weren't keeping counts on it in '06 through '09. But yes, it's, it's a very relevant um, question and we'll get that answer for you for post-hearing follow-up.
And I guess the, my follow-up question to that is how the proposal intends to address the fact that while they've been able to protect pedestrians, that the bicyclists and the others seem to be less protected or are somehow are not represented it well in, in the future?
That's a good question, again, we'll parse this with DOT and get back to you on that. Um, ostensibly, some of the bicycle-related incidences as well are from pandemic-related years. And you know, DOT's encouragement of using the corridor for um, for bike use and installing bike lanes, but um, we've been pounding DOT to get to the bottom of it. And so we will get more specifics for you.
Okay, because I guess the question also just becomes, are the accidents in DOT's view caused because of the alignment or lack thereof of the bicycle lanes? Or the usage of bicycle lanes? Or are they largely created by individual behavior on the part of the rider?
That's a very good question, we'll, we'll get to that in a minute.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Benjamin. Uh, and we will otherwise continue the hearing on this one on Wednesday. So that's what we're gonna do, thank you all very much, appreciate it. Okay, what's next on our agenda here?
The tenth item on our agenda is a non-ULP post-referral of a previously approved special permit in Manhattan Community District 5. Our presenter is Ezra Mosher.
All right, Ezra.
Hi.
Commissioner Sorio has requested.
There we go. Great. All right, so this is a post-referral presentation for a private application by Vornado Realty Trust for a non-ULP modification to a previously approved special permit. The modification would allow for design changes to a public plaza that was uh, previously approved in 2019 and is located at One Penn Plaza, which is a large office building in Midtown Manhattan. So just to jog everyone's memory, this was referred to Manhattan Community Board 5 at the November 13th, 2023 review session and is now returning for consideration and approval. Next slide, please, oh, wait, actually, I have it. Okay, so One Penn Plaza, which is the office building in which this is located, is on a full-block site which is bounded by 8th Avenue, West 33rd Street, West 34th Street and 7th Avenue in Community District 5. Um, as a noted, the application was referred out to Community Board 5 in November of 2023 and the board recommended disapprove, disapproval or denial. So just for a little bit of quick context, um, this shows the One Penn Building and um, its surrounding environment. It's located directly uh, north of the MSG Penn Station complex and is directly northeast of Monahan Station. Um, the uh, application concerns the West Plaza, which is one of seven public spaces on the site. You can see the West Plaza called out towards the westerly or left-hand side of the image. Um, and as I alluded to, in 2019, this West Plaza was upgraded and had portions of its area reduced pursuant to a Section 74761 special permit, which does allow for the reduction of public space for which a bonus is all granted. This is the first time this special permit was ever used and so far is the only time. So, I hope it's, okay, it's less washed out up there, okay. So um, this is a zoomed-in view of the West Plaza's plan and on the left-hand side, under approved conditions, you see the plaza and its approved conditions from 2019. The granting of the 2019 special permit required the applicant to make significant improvements to the plaza um, and to provide a new onsite entrance to Penn Station as a compensating amenity for reducing the um, reducing square footage of plaza area. So this West Plaza is primarily comprised of two portions. It has a through-block portion, show up there, no. So there's a through-block portion that runs north to south um, and is elevated above curb level. And then there is also a interior portion um, to its west, which is raised three feet above the through-block portion. Um, so the image on the right shows the condition in its um, pardon, proposed condition pursuant to the requested non-ULP modification. So the main change between the approved plaza and the proposed modification is that the interior pocket portion of the West Plaza that's raised three feet above the, the rest of it is now being lowered to be flush to the remainder of the plaza. The plaza itself is still elevated above curb level, but now under the proposed conditions, the entirety of the um, plaza area is one uniform level. Um, additionally, there is a bit of reconfiguration of some of the amenities, the plantings, trees, seating, under the proposed conditions, but the overall numbers of all these amenities are remaining the same under the proposed modification. So just to really quickly like, highlight what this looks like, these are the approved conditions, you can pretty clearly see this three-foot grade change here. Um, that is the interior portion of the West Plaza. Like you are in the middle of it, looking west at that alcove-like space. So you can clearly see the grade change. And then, under the proposed modification, it's brought flush to grade, the amenities are rearranged and it creates a very inviting space. So, one second, um, I'd like to quickly touch on the community board's recommendation. So Manhattan Community Board 5 recommended denial with a vote of 33 in favor of denial, zero against and one abstention. The concerns centered on items related to CPC chair certifications for open-air cafes and kiosks, which are actually being sought concurrently um, as part of this application, again, chairperson certifications. And the community board also asked the applicant to install a public restroom in the plaza or at least make the restrooms within the surrounding restaurants open to the public. And um, asked the applicant to consider opening both the plaza and the Penn Station entrance that are referenced uh, at an earlier hour for the convenience of early commuters. So, just to summarize, um, the applicant's requesting a non-ULP modification of a previously granted special permit um, that would permit design changes to a public plaza. For approval of a non-ULP modification, the commission must determine that the findings of the original special permit are still met, that no new waivers are being sought and that the previous waivers aren't being expanded in scope. So I would note that there are no new additional waivers being sought. Um, the plaza area boundaries remain the same and there are no changes to the compensating amenity, uh, which is that um, aforementioned Penn Station entrance. And additionally, the number and square footage of amenities is remaining the same as the 2019 approved condition. Uh, the design itself is largely the same as well, with the exception of the reconfigured portion of the interior of the West Plaza. So last point to note is that the applicant proceeded to DOB, who had issued permits for the proposed conditions. This is during the height of the pandemic, under extraordinary circumstances and emergency footing. Uh, ULP had been suspended and only recently reopened and there were emergency orders in place that gave special consideration for POPs, which reviewed as critical open spaces during pandemic conditions. So um, all that, it's still worth emphasizing that in light of this, what happened here is not a normal course of procedure and the application is effectively a cleanup-type action. It's also our understanding that DOB issued the permits in the context of several other simultaneous active permits for One Penn's repositioning, um, including permits for all seven POPs areas on the sites, which are stemming back to the 2019 approval. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Great, thank you very much, Ezra. So uh, and just, you noted the, the findings uh, that we need to have satisfied here to proceed. One of them was, well, let's go back on the screen, here we go.
Um. Well, these are the findings themselves, but the.
Okay, let's, right, okay.
For approval, yeah.
All right, so no new waivers, previous waivers not expanded in scope and the findings of the original special permit are met. Now let's go to that other slide.
Okay, so these are the original uh, findings of the special permit.
Okay. Such elimination or reduction is adequately compensated by the substitution of another public amenity. Want to talk about that?
Yeah, so that is the entrance to Penn Station, which is actually provided on a different plaza area within the site, but there is access from the West Plaza onto it. It is remaining in place as it was proposed under 2019 condition and so that is considered a um, amenity that provides equal or increased public benefit over the relatively small reduction of plaza space.
And any open, public, public accessible open areas um, and bonus to open area comply to the maximum extent feasible with the standards for public plazas? That was another one of the findings that had previously been found?
Yes, and we believe that the proposed um, design is, again, largely the same and went before, we believe that it did comply to the maximum extent feasible.
Okay, all right, got it, thank you, Commissioner Benjamin.
Um, two questions, the chair certifications for the open-air cafes?
Yep.
I know that we don't do that, that Chair Grotnick does that on his own, but if they were not approved by the chair. they were not approved by the chair, how would this space be reconfigured?
That's a good question. I would imagine that it would have to be reconfigured invariably just because they're dropping it three feet, but they are reconfiguring it to then accommodate, you know?
Cafes.
Exactly. So, yeah, that's a good question for the applicant, but the best of my knowledge, it would have been reconfigured anyhow due to the grade change.
And they would still do the rest of the plan if they did not get the go-ahead for the open-air cafes and the kiosks?
Yeah, I think that we, and we had flagged in the time, at the time, it was understood to be like very serious structural type below-grade issues that were preventing that portion that's three feet above the rest of the plaza from being dropped.
Interior space?
Yeah. And, you know, we typically think that it's already like very less than ideal that this space is so high above curb level. And, you know, we had heard from the applicant and from, you know, just the experience of the space, that it makes it hard to see across, it's less legible, and, you know, that that had also been very difficult for like maintenance teams from the building. So we generally believe in like as much visibility across the space as possible. We initially actually proved a kiosk right around, like just off-screen to the right of this image, where it would be visible from the street to try to draw people in and help provide some of that invitingness and visual continuity. So, yeah, we saw this as something that, you know, at the time, we didn't think there was any resolution to, but we were, the applicant told us that they were able to bring the space flush to grade, or, sorry, flush to the plaza level. And we thought that was like a very big improvement.
The community board spoke about wanting to, wanting the applicant to expand the hours to reflect Parks Department, which is usually dawn to dusk. Is that not possible here?
So they, as part of like, just a little history, for the council modifications for this, they opened it even earlier to that 7:00 AM and made it uniform across summer and winter. Originally, as approved by the commission, there were different hours of opening to kind of reflect the different daylight hours in winter and, well, spring and summer conditions. So they brought it to 7:00 AM, which, you know, the applicant believed was about the earliest they could reasonably do to get everything ready, because there's a lot of maintenance required of the space. There's a lot of cleanup, biohazards, stuff like that. So they do need a good amount of lead time to be able to get the plaza ready for operation.
How is the plaza closed off during those hours? There are no graphics of fences or other things that might restrict one's access to it. So are there fences or other mechanical means by which the space will be closed off?
It's a great question. So it was actually part of the, like, in conjunction with this 2019 special permit, there was an authorization to close the space overnight. This is something that has occasionally happened, but we treat this very seriously. It has to be like very exigent circumstances, and they have to demonstrate very thoroughly with like reams of data that there is, you know, a danger to users of the space from, you know, the ability to not close it overnight. And in this case, there's still, their closure mechanism is stanchions that can be, you know, like a velvet rope, basically. And it's more that the authorization allows them to enforce closure hours rather than trying to build a fence or something to keep people out. It just allows them, the security team and the NYPD, a little bit more latitude over enforcing hours of operation.
Could they give us a rendering of some type of what these stanchions would look like, how they incorporate them?
We have, I apologize, I didn't include it as part of this presentation, but we have quasi-ilustrative drawings that are submitted as part of the approval package that show them. And so we signed off on this as Manhattan Office along with the commission. We believe that it was truly like the most minimally invasive option possible. I mean, we've had that actors in the eighties put up full-on gates and the like. And so we were very adamant in, you know, enforcing that no permanent structure. I mean, the rules of it now have been updated to like the, you know, specify what types of barriers are like acceptable and appropriate or not. But, you know, we were very clear with the applicant that nothing beyond a velvet rope would be permitted.
And the signage? The community board also spoke about their concern that the tables be signed saying you did not have to buy anything at the cafe in order to sit and enjoy, and that the applicant did not feel that they wanted to do that.
Yeah, that's a recurring theme with CB Five. They ask every cafe applicant to, yeah, and it's, it's one of those things where the cafe operator can do so. They may submit an affidavit, they may just, you know, sign and submit something to CB Five, or they are technically within the rights to say, we, you know, we're not going to do that. There's no requirement that those seats be in the public.
POPs doesn't require any signage at all? Is there signage on the, on the ground that says this is a public space and you don't have to buy anything or do anything in order to sit here?
So it's an interesting question. So really, the workaround with this has been a sandwich board type of sign, something that is, you know, easily removable, but very quickly you get into issues of permitted obstructions, and you try to put in more permanent signage. So we've looked to menu boards, sandwich boards as things to, you know, do you want to weigh in on this as the, no, I was going to say that.
You can finish your thoughts.
Yeah. So, and the POPs regs actually say that these are private seating for the cafe operations. I mean, a cafe certification, we do take it very seriously, and it is effectively a quasi-privatization of that space for the cafe use, and there's often table service and the like. That's, you know, there's separate and separate calculations from plaza required amounts of chairs and tables and amenities. So that's why it's a separate certification that exists kind of like above the base design that we are very rigorous about. But do you want to add anything?
Well, since they're, just before, since they're changing the elevations and they're removing the stairs and other things, is it possible that they could have something in the sidewalk in their new, in their new pathways that alerts people to the idea this is a public plaza, and they can sit, they can eat, they can do whatever they want, and the hours by which they can do it?
Well, that actually is covered in the mandatory POP signage, and it is very clear. There's nothing around the specific cafe seating saying like these are accessible to members of the public who don't, you know, you don't have to buy something to sit here, but everything else is standard under the POPs regulation. So they have very clear signage on all frontages.
Right. It's just that the open-air cafe portion now, and with the swatches of green, make it appear more private.
Yeah. Yeah. And just to be clear, the seating within the open-air cafes is private seating, and it is dedicated solely to seating associated with the adjacent retail or restaurant and beverage use. It is not required to be accessible to the public. And as Ezra said, it is considered specifically as a semi-privatization of the space that enhances the usability of the space by bringing activity into the space. And it's really specifically outlined the maximum amount of the plaza that can be dedicated to that, maximum of twenty percent to ensure that, you know, you don't over-privatize the space. All of the remaining seating throughout the plaza is a hundred percent open to the public, no restrictions. But within those designated cafe areas, it is intended to be used for the patrons of those establishments. And in some cases, you know, we do get cafes occasionally associated with like a grab-and-go use that, you know, the public could conceivably sit there. In other cases, it's associated with more of like a restaurant use where a server is coming and serving you at a table. And in those cases, it's, you know, more exclusively private cafe seating. So, and it's really up to the specific nature of the operator there.
And are they able to put up stanchions there to stop regular people from just sitting?
No, actually, they're, they're not allowed to put up stanchions or any kind of vertical boundary of any kind. The most they can do is delineate it in white chalk just to indicate which area is part of like the table service area. But we, for the reasons that we don't want to put, you know, things that seem to prohibit use of the space, certainly visually, you know, those kinds of vertical obstructions.
Yeah. I will also note that when we consider open-air cafe applications in POPs, you know, again, these are chairperson certifications, the POPs requirements do typically require that we also look at the remaining public areas in the space to ensure that those are brought fully, you know, more than up to compliance, but meet the modern standards for POPs as well. So the idea is that the public is getting a really measurable and tangible benefit out of this, at the same time that a portion of the POPs is being dedicated to, you know, private open-air cafe use.
Okay. Thank you very much for your answers. And I ask these questions because the community board was obviously so opposed to this and couldn't find a way to say anything positive about the changes. They felt that there was a net loss of space available to the public for which Penn Plaza One had received bonuses.
You know.
Obviously, I know that I won't be voting on the open-air cafes only on the authorization, but I would, I'm sure the chair has been looking at the community board's recommendations with an eye towards what they would ask.
I think that part of it as well, from my recollection of the hearing at the community board, was that the applicant was pretty flat out, like, were you not entertaining this? And so that was where the hard disapproval came in. Sometimes these come in as deny with conditions, the condition being that, you know, the restaurant make restrooms available or seating available, et cetera. And, you know, those become kind of like longer discussions. So the recommendation just goes as deny with conditions. So that was my recollection of why it was. So.
Vement?
Yeah, vehement. But I will say that that tends to be the case with just about every cafe that's come through them the last couple of years. It's, you know, it's an issue that they, they care a lot about.
And I would note that the chair is no longer, there have been changes in personnel at the community board, and this recommendation was from the community board. Leadership that is no longer in the leadership position.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Benjamin. I will just, I would like for them to follow up with the things that Commissioner Benjamin has requested, although I will note, those things were not part of the changes that we're evaluating today. If you can ask them, I think that would be helpful. Also, I intended to call a voice vote on this since we're looking at just the actual physical change that's proposed, as opposed to the questions of the chair certifications, questions of whether the public should be able to sit at a, you know, private open-air cafe and things like that. So, but I just wanted to confirm that that is the case, that any barriers to close the space overnight, they're not proposing any change to that. Is that right?
No changes to that.
And on the, the cafe rules and the things that associate with the seating and accommodations there, those are not before the commission today in this authorization. Is that right?
That's correct.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Let me go to Vice Chair Knuckles.
I think I may have answered my own. I just wanted to align the rendering with, with the site plan.
Sure. I mean, site plan here?
Yeah, yeah. Go back to slide, it's both slide one and slide nine. I just want to, yeah.
So this is orienting kind of over the shoulder, looking south by southwest. You can see Madison Square Garden in the periphery. That's to south of the space. And then you can kind of see the steps of the Farley Building.
So you're parallel to Eighth Avenue, looking south?
Yeah, at a slight angle, but generally, yes, parallel. That, and that's like the line that the, the light structure there traces is north-south, parallel, but they have with some jogs in there.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Sorio?
Thank you, Chair. I had similar questions to Commissioner Benjamin, not to repeat myself or ourselves. I wanted to highlight a couple very specific things. One is, in terms of the question around the private seating area and the bench, and kind of like, you kind of like see it there, the community board is also saying that the distance seems to be too short from the public bench and the actual seating area. And I'm wondering if there's any type of guideline or a requirement, a minimum requirement there. You explained very clearly what we cannot do in terms of, you know, but, but is there a minimum distance required?
Good question. Circulation paths, which don't necessarily need to be every single portion, are at eight feet wide, and they have to provide at least one of those. They provide two of those on the north-south axis, and then one in the east-west axis. Generally speaking, we require like three feet of clearance from where your feet would approximately be to where you can start putting other types of obstructions in, just so that folks' feet aren't getting in the way of people trying to use the space. I'm, it's worth looking into, because I'm already going to be coming back with some images for, for the commission, but it could also be a little bit of the optics of the rendering, but I can find out about exactly how far that is and if that raises any concerns. But generally speaking, when we took a look at the design and reviewed it, technical review division, there was nothing that was flagged as, you know, an issue from a compliance perspective.
Yeah, the other image that shows that is the one that is labeled proposed area, where, where, I don't know, I mean, you're saying three feet, like, also the floor plan shows it. But anyway, the, like, yeah, the one that you just passed, that one. So you're saying three feet is what you use. They're saying four to five feet sounds too close. But, yeah, if you can, if you can, like, see, whether there's a way to, to acknowledge their concern without necessarily restricting this. But the other thing is, so in terms of the, the twenty-four-hour use, you've been very clear in terms of the fact that there are no proposed obstructions, as, as the chair clarified. But what about lighting? Are they, can they keep the lights on? Is it possible to, you know, provide other types of, like, services here that don't necessarily mean this is open, but that can still sort of like, you know, cater to the needs of, you know, just as a public space?
They are definitely supposed to keep the, their lights on while it's closed. We have foot candle requirements, and even though there, we grant this authorization to allow like temporary overnight closure, that doesn't obviate the need to keep the space like lit in a compliant fashion. And we're very actually rigid about this, too. Like, we don't allow, for example, like, streetlights to count towards that. We, we're like, this has to be lights that you are putting into the plaza space, have to have two-foot candles minimum everywhere. So, yes, the lights are definitely intended to stay on, and that's so that the space can be, you know, if it's, even if it's closed, feel inviting, not create, you know, any kind of like, like, I guess, areas with like low visibility or that might make somebody, you know, cautious walking by it, because it's already that high-grade change. So.
So closed really means here that there's no service, basically. There's no one filling anything, but you can still use the space or circulate through it?
Although I will say that one of the stipulations was that if they ever for any reason in holding an event or for the operation of the cafes extend the hours beyond 10:00 PM, the whole plaza has to stay open. So they can't basically close it down for the private use of those cafe operators. If they're going to go beyond 10:00 PM, whole thing has to be open.
Thank you. One last question, which is regarding the bathroom, the public bathroom.
Yeah.
So it sounds like the, there's some, some aspects of this conversation actually do go back to the original authorization. And I'm wondering if you can, if you can help us understand a little bit, you know, how much of that is actually sort of like a reason to engage in a more productive conversation, and/or whether the department can facilitate a little bit of flexibility in terms of what the community board is asking for and what seems to be like a very sort of like radical response?
Yeah. I mean, I think that part of the applicant's response there is because as part of the Penn Station entrance, they are actually going to be creating a new restroom that's at the bottom of the stairs that go down to Penn Station. So at the kind of, it's, I guess you call it concourse level, it's kind of more of a mezzanine within Penn Station, but there's Penn Station infrastructure directly below site. And so as part of driving their new stair corps down to that level, they're also putting a new public restroom or restrooms down there. So I think that from the applicant's perspective, it was kind of seen as redundant, and it's not a requirement of the POPs regulations. But, yeah, I guess they did want to highlight something else that. No, I was going to just highlight that, you know, since we weren't going in so much detail over the previous approval, that there was part of that was a restroom at the lower level.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. And Commissioner Sorio, just to return to your question about the distance between the bench and adjacent cafe seating, the, the plaza text lays out that cafes should be accessible from all sides except for when they abut, like a building wall, for example. It doesn't lay out a specific distance that satisfies that, as Ezra mentioned. As Ezra mentioned, we do generally look to three feet to provide an adequate distance to ensure that there is a sufficient standoff between somebody who's seated on a bench and somebody at an adjacent table. These are distinct from the requirements for circulation paths that are intended to accommodate like pedestrian flows, and it's really about striking a balance between ensuring that we get meaningful amenity, there's room for meaningful amenities like benches in a plaza, to kind of coexist with the cafe, but still ensuring that people can kind of walk by without, you know, bumping into one another, for example, so.
Thank you, that's useful, and it sounds like, you know, you're, you're focusing on making this as functional as possible. I just can't understand, sort of like their concern, that, that even three feet is, seems like too close when you are sort of like sitting, eating, and there's somebody sitting three feet away from you, you know, it's, it's, or, or vice versa, you know, you, you may feel uncomfortable sitting so close to someone else.
Yeah, no, I certainly understand that, this is a, a standard that we use for all of our open-air cafes, and, you know, I think all different kinds of people have different levels of tolerance as to how comfortably feel sitting, you know, in a, in a, you know, outdoor seating area on the street, for example, you know, that we have post-COVID, or sitting, you know, some people like to be in kind of like the middle of like the hustle and bustle, and other people want to be, you know, a celebrity might want to be removed away from that, where they can't be viewed, so, you know, I think this really accommodates a whole range of, of people's levels of comfort.
Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. So before we vote, I, I just want to note that the most fundamental change that is being proposed here is the removal of those stairs, to me, and I think that is a hugely significant and positive change, having experienced this plaza many times and have seen, you know, it's obviously got steps to go up it, and then more steps to go up it, removing those stairs, I think is a very, very positive change for all uses, and that really is the foundation of what, what is before us here. So not take away from any of the comments that were made about all sorts of POPS rules more generally, or bathrooms, or, and I love CB5, I love myself some CB5, but the question before us is, what's that?
And they love you too.
They love me too, that's nice. We, we, we're looking at the question that's, that's here, so I am going to call this one for a vote. We'll seek consent by a voice vote to send an approval letter to the Buildings Department. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Okay, you guys have it. Thank you very much, Ezra.
Thank you.
Okay.
And will you be sending the chair cert-
So Ezra, give us a status on, on the rest.
So typically, when they're traveling with like a non-Ular modification, we have everything wait until the commission approves the largest item, so then we would bring forward a synopsis of the cafe applications and kiosk applications to the chair, and from there, it goes to City Council for a 20-day period. It's very arcane and strange why we have this referral period, because there's discussion about whether there's actual jurisdiction to be able to comment on them.
Well, it's because the city council sued over this issue.
Yeah.
And city planning responded, and then for now probably 20 years, none of us did everything, anything, but then Council David Karnowski agreed that they would send a letter. They didn't have to, but that in the interests of all, they would send a letter to the council informing them of it, and the council could do with that as they would.
And we send the full application to them too, for their own perusal.
Yep, thank you.
Okay, thank you Ezra. All right, let's, let's move on to the final items.
The 11th item on our agenda is a City Council modification scope determination for the 2301 Steinway Street rezoning in Queens Community District One. The City Council proposes to modify the zoning text amendment to Appendix F, removing MIH Option 2 and adding the deep affordability option, and staff believe this modification is within scope.
Great, thank you. Any questions? Seeing none, I'll seek consent by a voice vote to send a letter to the council. The modifications are in fact within scope. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Thank you. The, the, the motion passes.
The 12th item on our agenda is a City Council modification scope determination for the 3011 12th Street rezoning in Queens Community District One. The City Council proposes to modify the zoning text amendment to Appendix F, removing MIH Option 2 and adding the deep affordability option, and staff believe this modification is within scope.
Any questions? Okay, I seek consent by a voice vote to send a letter to the council that these modifications also are within scope. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, thank you, it's approved.
Okay. The 13th item on our agenda is a City Council modification scope determination for the 396400 Avenue X rezoning in Brooklyn Community District 15. The City Council proposes to modify the zoning text amendment to Appendix F, removing MIH Option 2, and staff believe this modification is within scope.
Great, again, any questions? Seeing none, seek consent by a voice vote here to send a letter to the council that these modifications are also within scope. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Okay, thank you, ayes have it.
Okay, future votes. For consideration on Wednesday, April 3, 2024, staff have prepared reports for Cypress Hills Fulton bid formation, Long Island City bid expansion, and the 4725 34th Street site selection and acquisition. Any questions? Okay.
Great, thank you. Anything else for today?
No, Chair, that is all.
Okay, and with that, 3:42 p.m., we are adjourned, we'll see you all on Wednesday. Thank you.
Thank you.